Hello and welcome to the first of three debates with the candidates for Lowell City Council. LTC is very pleased to host and broadcast these debates, which are a collaboration with The Lowell Sun, The Kamai Post USA, and CMAA. There are a total of 18 candidates running for nine seats from the council. And we've divided the candidates alphabetically into three groups for these debates, so that each will feature six candidates. The second and third debates will be right here on Channel 8 on Thursday, October 24th, beginning at 6:30 PM. The candidates in this first debate are Alexandra Amparo Delvilar, Cory Belanger, Juan, oops, David Conway, Juan Castaneda, Tai Chum, and Sokari Chow. We have three Lowell residents here to ask the debate questions. Nancy Peña, producer of the TV program "Colores Latinos" on LTC; Gloria Politis, LTC staff member; and Soben Pin, publisher of The Kamai Post USA. They will take turns asking a question that will be answered by all of the candidates, and each answer will be given one minute, so that we can cover a lot of important issues. We'll start out by giving each candidate up to two minutes to introduce him or herself. Please don't feel compelled to take all that time if you don't want to. Our timekeeper is Kinway Sur from the CMAA. He will hold up a sign that shows 16 seconds remaining and will ring a bell when time is up. Let's start the introductory statements with Ms. Amparo Delvilar. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Amparo Delvilar. I'm running for Lowell City Council. I am a long-term resident of Lowell, 25 years of my life. I currently am a social worker, and I'm a mother and a wife, and that's who I am.
Okay. Cory?
Good evening. For starters, I'd like to thank all the hosts for this opportunity here this evening, for an opportunity to reach out to you, the voters of Lowell. But my name is Cory Belanger. I am running for city council. And as you may be aware, the election in 2017 did not go my way. However, I did not walk away from my position and my involvement through the city of Lowell. I remain chairman of the mayor's opioid task force since 2014. And as a result, through the hard work of task force members, first responders, and many, many city organizations, overdoses in the city of Lowell have been dramatically reduced by 33% in 2019. It's just a remarkable percentage, and I would like to thank all first responders and city officials that play a role in that. But as a councillor, we moved this city forward in many, many facets of government. For starters, public safety. A safe city is paramount. During my tenure on the city council, we increased the number of sworn police officers to nearly 250, which was the highest number in decades at the time. Firefighters to 212, again, the highest number of decades. But much more needs to be done. We need to address our aging police station and our aging firehouses. Brave and committed men and women of public safety deserve much more than what they're in. So I am running as a first responder candidate. I support police, fire, and EMTs, and proudly stand behind them. On education, as we all know, we have a brand-new high school going to be built, starting in 2021, at its current location in the downtown. And we're going to need experienced leaders going forward. So we have this and many other critical issues that are going to be facing the city of Lowell that I would be delighted to take on. So I ask you, the voters of Lowell, for your vote on Tuesday, November 5th, and a second chance in serving you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Conway?
Good evening. My name is David Conway, and I'm seeking reelection to Lowell City Council. I first want to thank LTC, Kamai Post, and The Lowell Sun for giving me the opportunity to share my ideas with the voters of Lowell. On a personal note, I was born and raised in Lowell, and I'm married, and I've been blessed to have two daughters, two granddaughters, and a grandson. After receiving my master's degree in government and history, I worked in the Lowell Public Schools for over 35 years as a teacher and a housemaster at Lowell High School. When I retired, I ran successfully and served for four terms on the Lowell School Committee. And for the last two years, I have been serving on the city council. During these two years, I'm proud to have authored a number of motions that were supported by the city council and city manager. In particular, number one, protecting our neighborhoods by reinstating the Crime Stoppers hotline. Number two, helping reduce traffic, a plan to utilize retired police officers to help with high-traffic intersections during the peak times. Number three, anti-violence initiatives that resulted in the adding of cameras in known crime areas and gang violence areas. Two additional offices were assigned to the gang units, and new partnerships with state and federal law enforcement agencies. And number four, develop an employee incentive program that will save taxpayers money. I humbly ask for one of your nine votes on November 5th in order for me to continue to provide innovative ideas, common-sense solutions. I am David Conway, number one on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Castaneda?
Hi, how are you? My name is Juan Castaneda. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Lowell for the last 31 years. My mother came here in 1972, and we worked in the city for many years. My mother worked more than 20 years in the mills. And also, I worked in the same place for a while. But then after that, I give my life to the city of Lowell. For the last 20 years, I've been working with the community, and we know it's a lot to do. Like you notice, we, our campaign focused in the real issues of the city of Lowell, what is the humbleness, the drugs problem, the violence, and all the stuff. We went working for that, and we have results. We have a system where we can restore many people, and I have testimonies about this. What we want you to please is to give you a chance to vote for the new generation. Give us your chance to give us the opportunity to work with the city. Like I told you, we've been working for the last 20 years, and we just want you to please to give us the opportunity to vote for Juan Castaneda. That way, we can come with a new vision and refresh the city council office. Do you notice, not they doing a bad work, they doing a good job. But I think so we need to do differently to give a new direction to the city. Because if we want to attract new investors in the city of Lowell, we have to take care about all these issues in the city that wait or develop an economy grow a little bit. And you see the stores and the buildings in the downtown Lowell, many of them are empty because the people is afraid to invest because of the problem we have in the city. But thank you very much. Give us the chance to work together. My name is Juan Castaneda. Please give us one of your nine votes. Thank you, and God bless you.
Okay, Mr. Chum?
Hi, my name is Tai Chum. My gender pronoun is "his." And I don't have no script, so I'm just going to talk from here. So I lived here for over 30 years. I came here as a refugee when I was five years old. You know, I came here, I went through the whole struggle with my family. We went through a lot. There's a lot of violence happening, there's a lot of, it was just negative stuff happening as I grew up in the neighborhoods. And, you know, I went through the whole school system, from the Green High School, Rogers School, Lowell High School, 2002, and Municipal Community College and UMass Lowell. I got my degree in business management, and I'm proud to say that because, you know, I set like a stepping stone for my family to, you know, education is achievable. So it's a breakthrough for me. I want y'all to feel that out. And also that, you know, right now, I'm successful. The reason why I say successful is that I'm successful in my family life. You know, I've got a beautiful wife, three beautiful kids, six, four, and 11 months. Can you believe it, 11 months? I'm running for office. It's because I have this passion, like I want my kids to feel connected and loved within the cities. And I'm pretty sure all y'all want to feel the same thing for your kids. So my three commitments is this for you guys, is number one is violent prevention. You know, I used to work for a nonprofit, sexual violence nonprofit, and we educate young folks about what is it about violence? What is it about you as a person who could be a power player in preventing violence from happening in your city? Where you who go to school, you don't have to be暴力. Where you walk down the street, you don't have to be feared of getting jumped or whatever it is that's happening, you know? These kind of stuff is still happening. I want to make sure that out there in city hall, we highlight it. We highlight it. I want to do that. The second thing is youth. You know, education is very important to me. I want to make sure that our youth is getting the full education that needed. I'm talking about the personal development, right? The humanity itself teaches youth about themselves, how to empower themselves, how to basically just embrace themselves or who they are. The third thing is environment. I want to make sure that we still living and breathing the same quality of air that is not intoxicating our body. You know, I own a business, you know, I live in, I own a business. I'm a homeowner, you know? I know my time's up, but I just want you to hear this out. Take me as a husband, right? As a husband, as a father, as someone who lived here for a long time, you know, I'm hoping for one year vote. That's it, just one vote. So I could basically just, basically just serve you. That's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Chow?
Good evening. My name is Sokari Chow. This is my second time running for city council. The last time I ran was 2017, which I came in 10th place. And if you would give me one of the nine votes this time, I would be elected to serve the community of Lowell. Before I continue, I want to thank LTC and the host here that will present here, and I want to thank the audience for watching us this evening. I noticed a lot of things going on tonight, but I really appreciate your interest, your concerns, and your love for the city, and all the leadership that may be serving you in the 2020 city councillor. I came to Lowell in 1986. I grew up in Acre. I went to the Bartlett School. After the Bartlett School, I was very fortunate. I won a scholarship to attend Phillips Academy in Andover for four years. After Phillips Academy, I went to McAllister College. After college, I had a good job in St. Paul, Minnesota. That was where my college was. But I knew that I was missing something in my life, in my heart. First of all, my whole family was back in Lowell. So I want to come back here to Lowell to raise, to be with my family and to raise my family. I am now married. I met with my wife in 2003 in the house that we live in now. We have two teenage boys, you know, they play sports. They are very busy. They do a lot of same activities as many of the families with young children in Lowell. So that's why we share many of the same concerns in Lowell. And I understand the struggles of working families, of young families, of older families. So if I'm elected, I want to make sure that I represent all the families, all the hard-working families in Lowell. I will work very hard to earn your trust. I will be very vigilant with fiscal management, and I will do what it takes to work with everybody in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. Now it's time to begin the question-and-answer portion of the evening. The questions were submitted by the Lowell Democratic City Committee, Solidarity Lowell, Kamai Post USA, The Lowell Sun, Latino community members, and the CMAA. Let's start with a question from Soben Pin. And let's direct it first to Sokari Chow.
The housing market in Lowell is slim to none. It is very difficult for low-income to mid-income family obtain substantial housing opportunities. There is a waiting list for Section 8 vouchers. There's not a lot of homes available for purchase or rent, and housing prices are too pricey to afford. Will you, what will you do to help Lowell generate and build a housing market that is affordable to the whole community?
That's a good question, Soben. So I used to run a mortgage company from 1999 to 2088. And I definitely saw when the housing market was quite low, and many houses in the Highlands, they were about $60,000, $70,000 only. And at the height of the market in 2008, before the crash, it was about $300,000. And it crashed, of course, and now it's way back up again. And this is very, very difficult because city has always been, Lowell has been a city of hard-working families. And it's our American dreams to work hard, save money, and buy a house. But with the current situation, now the price is so high, we have to make sure that we create programs that would provide not only for low-income housing renters, but also provide programs to people who own homes as well. So we need to have more development in the community, both for renters as well as for homeowners in the city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chum, would you answer the same question, please?
Sure. Well, coming from someone who lived in Lowell Housing Authority for the longest time, you know, I just want to say, like, anybody could become homeless in a matter of seconds, you know, college students, anybody. Even though you make six figures, you could still become homeless in a matter of seconds. So I would say, using my community organization skill, I would say, get people to get on the table. You know, we have committee, we've got a housing committee that we meet. I mean, I appreciate Lowell Housing Authority, CTI, and all these other committees. They have committee that they meet regularly and talk. I want to make sure that we bring them to the table and brainstorm about what is it can we do to improve our housing issue in Lowell? You know, start with the expert. I'm not an expert in housing, but I'm sure their expert, they're doing every time constantly, every single day, every single second, they're thinking about it. So I want to make sure I'll bring these people into the table, and we'll talk about it. Build it like a plan, like a productive plan, not just one or two. Let's say a couple of planners fail out, you know, they're all going to be failed out, but then again, we'll learn from it and make sure we build more to come. Basically, just bring people to the table.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda?
Yes, hi. What I notice is we can come with some programs or idea, because you know, it's a lot of empty buildings in the city of Lowell, is one. And the other one is, I'm the only candidate from the acre, and I noticed this. You can see the houses around, but we got to come with something different with the city. The city have to get involved of the pricing of the rent. Everybody buy a house and charge whatever they want to charge anybody. So if you notice right there in front of the train station, we have a new building who's $3,500 an apartment. So that's going to bring the people around the area, it will increase the rent, because they will say, oh, look, there is $3,500 in the corner, so my house is right in the front, I can charge $1,200 for one room. If you notice that, and the acre also, the rent is so expensive, but the city have to come with a program or something, I don't know, maybe we can work something according for the value of the house to come with the rent. But we, the city have to get involved.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you. That, it's an excellent question, and it's one of the most complicated questions that I think we'll probably see tonight. I think that Lowell has always been a city that thrives on partnerships. And I think what we have to do, there are so many people around that we don't know about, that cannot afford this, the housing. I've talked to people constantly, and they just, they can't afford it. And it's a real difficult situation. I think really, we have to go back to the partnerships, and I'll probably mention that term a number of times tonight. We've got to bring the bankers to the table, the real estate people, the different social organizations, the city in itself, and have to come back, like I think a lot of candidates just said tonight, we have to develop a plan through the partnership that is going to help solve the problem going forward. And it's not just a Lowell, it's throughout the entire nation. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Belanger?
Well, thank you. This has been an ongoing issue for a number of years, and it is a, it's sort of a tribute to the success that the city of Lowell has with its leadership, both past and present. Now, here are a few contributing factors why housing is at such a premium here in the city of Lowell. Number one, the success of UMass Lowell. It's, the classes are growing year by year, and thus, as a result, housing demands grow as well. We are on the commuter rail to Boston, making, Boston is far more expensive, so millennials are reaching towards more cities and towns that are along the commute rail. So thus, that enhances jacking up rents as well. Okay? So there are a number of factors that contribute to this. But I will add that the state officials were just in the city just a few weeks ago, and it was clear, they made it clear to us that economic development can be stagnated if you don't have the required amount of affordable units. So if elected, I will propose working very closely with organizations such as the Coalition for a Better Acre. The answer is state subsidies. Construction costs are far too high. So we need to attack grants and state subsidies. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Amparo Delvilar?
So again, I think that advocating for partnership, like Mr. Conway said, is super important. As myself, I was homeless at the age of 16 years old when I became emancipated, and I was working a full-time job and also attending high school. So I completely understand the rent control, and definitely advocating for rent control is super important for a lot of our families that are not just homeless because they can't, are not going on housing, but they just can't afford it. So advocating for our younger adults that are becoming adults, and advocating for our single moms and our women that are working day-to-day work and cannot afford, so rent control is what I will be advocating for.
Okay, thank you very much. The next question is from Nancy Peña, and we'll direct it first to Mr. Conway.
Thank you. Previously, there were several councillors who support immigrants, especially the Latino community in Lowell. However, today, there are some councillors who have changed their rhetoric and see the immigrants as a threat, and now seek to deport families who have lived in the city for years and have contributed to the economy. What plan do you have for Lowell immigrants? Should Lowell be a sanctuary city?
Well, first of all, if you take a look at the history of Lowell, and I've been, I was very, very fortunate to actually develop that first course, going back into the '70s with the history of Lowell. And even though I was born and brought up in the city, there were a lot of things I didn't know. And I certainly did, I certainly understood what Lowell was really about when I started that course. Lowell is a city of immigrants, and it always has been. My grandfather, grandmother on both sides were born in Ireland, Cork, Tipperary, and Mayo, and they came over here, and it was a struggle. My aunt, I should say my grandmother, my grandmother actually worked in the mills at like 13 years old, 12 years old, which is incredible. So I think that Lowell has always embraced the immigrant communities, and I know it still will. You know, there's nothing, there's nothing that's going to be perfect, but I think what we have to do is constantly be sitting down, talking to people, and listening to what they have to say and what they need.
Mr. Belanger?
Well, thank you. In my four years serving on the city council, I think we were all extremely welcoming to immigrants, and that trend continues today. There has been no one, no city or town that I know of that's been more welcoming the last 150 years than the city of Lowell and its residents, welcoming and embracing immigrants, their culture, and holding it right to their heart. I think it is not wise to declare being a sanctuary city when essentially we already are. The Lowell Police Department will never be an active immigration deportation force. We ask no questions as to immigration status when someone calls for a complaint, or if someone is pulled over for a traffic violation, whatever it may be, nor will they be. So I think essentially, the fabric of Lowell, we already are sanctuary cities. We went through this when I was on the council, in 2017, we signed a trust ordinance that gave, that could be welcoming enough to immigrants and allow public safety officials to do their job in a safe, public safety manner as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Amparo Delvilar?
Hi. So I think, again, being a minority woman, it's interesting, the question. I completely do not support us, you know, I seen ICE here last week, and it was very scary for a lot of our families, a lot of our young adults, actually, you know, that are immigrants, unfortunately, they have family that are immigrants. So I think, again, supporting those immigrants, and not all immigrants are what they, what people are making them to be. So again, giving them support, being there for them, and being as Lowell should be, as diverse as we can, because they're hard-working families, and they are immigrants. So there's my answer.
Thank you very much. Mr. Castaneda?
Yes, hi. We, we know, like all of us, Lowell is a city of immigrants, but like I said before, Lowell don't have a problem with the immigrants. All of us work and contribute to the city of Lowell for many years. Like I said before, many, all of us are immigrants for a third, for a fifth generation, fifth generation of the city of Lowell. What we need to create is to make more progress for these people, for the young people who come here. I know many people who come from different countries, as a president of Lowell Soccer League and a founder of this corporation. I've been working with them close, and I notice we need to work with this new generation of immigrants to get them involved in the city of Lowell and teach them how to behave in this nation, because sometimes they come afraid for what they go through in his own country, so come here, and they afraid to come out and get involved in the things of the city. So I think so the city needs to give more opportunities and alternatives to them.
Mr. Chum?
It's a good question, you know, this, I've been doing, asking a lot of, same question getting popping up. I've been thinking about it. So I want to share you my story, when my wife told me, like, she was a teacher aides, and one of the students was, is a refugee, right? And what happened is, they get scared all the time, you know, the basic need is not being met. And long story short, it's more of like, I feel sad for the kids, you know, coming down here, not knowing anybody, went through the whole violence and come down here, and they're young. You think they will have this backbone, right? And they go through a struggle, but they're not, you look at them, they're still a kid. They still enjoy this little stuff. So if a sanctuary city means don't deport people, yes. I don't want any deportations. That's not right. People come down here, especially in my community, I say my community, we came down here, and we established our life, right? Because of little things that happened before, and those are little stuff, right? It's not like the serious crimes, if it's killing somebody, yeah, you should go back. But it's not, you know, just little crimes of stealing stuff, then no, you shouldn't be deporting people because of that. I don't believe it, you know, I don't believe it all. People have, you know, you build your life here, right? You got a wife and kids here, right? So to put them back in a country where they don't know, that's tough. That's just killing another person like yourself. And that's basically taking your responsibility as a US, right? Take your responsibility as a city and lay it down to another person, your problem going to another person now, another country now, so that's not right.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chow?
There's a reason why Lowell is called the melting pot, you know? Every so decades, you have a new group of immigrants, starting from the English, the Irish, the Italians, the Greeks, the Portuguese, the Hispanics, Latinos, and now the Asian. And the reason we all come to Lowell, because, you know, we hear from words of mouth, from other people that came here looking for jobs, for to be with their family and so forth. And the news about Lowell is that it is very welcoming. Everybody in Lowell is an immigrant or have ancestors who are immigrants. And so, great, great, Lowell is a wonderful city. I don't think we should politicize what's going on at the federal level to label Lowell one way or another. We have many people in the police department who are immigrants, first responders that are all immigrants, they understand what it means to be immigrants and to take care of each other. And right now, as Cory said earlier, you know, Lowell already act like a sanctuary city without labeling it and risking it with any type of federal funding and so forth. So I like it the way it is right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question is from Gloria Politis. This could be a short one.
Yes. Which election system option do you support, and why? Would you start, please?
Absolutely. So I like 8-3. I think, and I believe, while running for my first time, it's been extremely hard trying to get to all of Lowell. You know, again, it's my first time running, and I think Lowell needs, on our panel, diversity. We need new, fresh ideas, ideas of people who can be relatable, who might not understand so much of politics but do understand life skills and things that they've been through in life that can bring a lot to the table, and that can bring to our younger adults, I emphasize that because the younger adults is our future. So I definitely support 8-3, because I believe having district representation will be best for each of our neighborhoods. So that's the one I support.
Great, thank you. Mr. Belanger?
Well, thank you for the question. There's been much dialogue with councillor Conway and his colleagues the previous two years. They've been very busy with this issue, and I think have handled it very, very well, and I commend all of them. But I think we're down to two options at this point, ranked choice voting, which to me, I think comes off a little convoluted. I know it may sound simple, you vote for your favorite first, your second favorite second, and so on and so forth, but other votes get swapped around. If candidates don't make it, votes go here. So it is a little complex, and there's a reason for that. Only Cambridge doesn't, there's only about a handful Only Cambridge doesn't, there's only about a handful of cities and towns in the country that have this current system. So I think it's much more simpler for the voters to go to eight-three. I think if it's diversity we're looking to accomplish, that's the best way to do it. And I could still run at large, I enjoy serving all residents of the whole city, I campaign that way. I'm prepared to run that way if need be. So I think if diversity is the results we want, eight-three is the best way to achieve it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Conway.
Yes, thank you. I think that I'm probably going to be a little different than the rest of the candidates here tonight. I know that at the beginning, I certainly felt that the system that we had was the appropriate system. And I think back just very quickly about a story that I have, my grandmother, who was in her late eighties, and she went out to vote, and she'd put the little white gloves on, and the pocketbook, and the hat, and so forth. And I said to her one day, what, why, why do you do this? And she said to me, well, you know, when I was a girl, I couldn't vote. And a lot of my friends and relatives died in the wars. So she said, I would be disrespecting my agenda and my friends and relatives. So, you know, I kept that in mind, but I will say, at the end of the day, this is a non-binding question on the, in the ballot. And my bosses are the people, and whatever they say, that's where I'm going to vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chow.
I believe the hybrid system, the eight-three, eight counselors, district, and three-at-large is the most fair and the most equitable. Because the result of the lawsuit, or the purpose and the reason the lawsuit was to seek diversity and to seek equal representation from different neighborhoods. And I don't think the ranked choice voting will reflect that. I think the only way to guarantee that we will have representation from each neighborhood is to have the district. And of course, the three-at-large will represent the whole city as a whole. So in that system, I believe all voices will be heard and will be represented.
Thank you, Mr. Chum.
Eight-three, I always advocate for this in the beginning, is eight-three. I love it because, you know, you really know what's happening within your neighborhoods, right? Every neighborhood is different, every neighborhood is unique, every neighborhood have their different concern and need. So with eight-three itself, it represents the true voice of the concern that needed to be addressed. And with the eight-three, that person who represent their neighborhood have accountability and responsibility to fix it. And if not, then the at-large will take care of it, right? So eight-three is basically the best way to go, so I keep on saying it, eight-three.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Castaneda.
Yes, I guess all of us agree with eight-three because it will give opportunity to everybody in the city and also motivate the new generation, the new voters. Because I think so it's time to change our mind in the city of Lowell, because we've been voting for the same people for the last twenty-two years, twenty-four years. And do you notice it's outside, it's a great potential over there. It's a, it's a, people more prepared, but they afraid to run. But if, I think so this will motivate them to change their mind and give, bring the knowledge and all they have to put it to the service of the city of Lowell. I think so eight-three is the best for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next question is from Soben Pin, and we'll direct it first to Tai Chan.
Currently, fifty percent of the city population is represented by different ethnicities. How do we, as a city, come together not to only celebrate the culture of diversity, but also engage and include them in the decision-making process? Also, what is your plan to reach out to Khmer and Spanish speakers so they have equal access to city resources and job opportunities?
Just touched my heart right there. I love that question. You know, I feel that, I always tell people, is meeting people where they are at. You know, I look at it differently, you're talking about the age differently, the elders, the mid-aged, the younger folks. And then you're talking about the incomes, the race itself, you know, all these come to play. So you've really got to look into these kind of stuff to really meet people really where they at. If you're talking about violent preventions, a lot for younger folks, right, domestic or sexual violence, whatever it is, meet them where they at. Some folk will play basketball, some folk will plays skateboard, or whatever it is, right? You really need to meet them where they at and talk their language. You can't just expect, hey, come to City Hall and, you know, everything be all great. It's not like that, it's really meeting people where they at and also, in a way, help them guide to where you want to be at. You know, your vision for Lowell itself, like the vision of preventing. So I think that's the best way. And also, this language is going to be language, you know, but then again, just give up the food. Everybody love food, right? So, hey, can you meet me up, talk about this? And you just, you know, build that relationship first, then start doing the process. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
Yes, like, I agree with you. We interact with the people, you notice all the concerns. And myself, I go to the college kids, I go to the, also the young adults, and also the older people, they come with the counseling. But when you interact with them, you notice what we, we as a city needs to improve. And that's the way, I guess, interact with the people, the way you can, you can come with new ideas to change and to provide the city to keep growing and develop a better relationship with the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's, it's a great question. I will say that you do have to reach out where individuals are, especially when we're talking about trying to bring more, we're trying to bring more minorities into our government. I think it's done on different, different levels. You know, there's, there are a lot of religious leaders in the city of Lowell, and I think that's one area that we could certainly tap into to help us. You certainly have great partners with UMass and with Middlesex Community College, working with them to encourage those students coming out of college to get involved with the city, to get involved with the city. And one of the ways we can do that, and I think it's extremely important, take a look at the different boards. We have so many different boards on the city, and quite often, it's difficult to fill those positions. So we have to get the word out to say, hey, come on, come on in one of these boards, and I think there you can really, you can get them very interested in government. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Belanger.
Well, thank you. That was great, Councilor Conway, I'm going to piggyback on a lot of his comments. Look, prior to being elected, I served in the zoning board of appeals for ten years. I served this city without, it pays a very minimal stipend, a few dollars a month. You're not in government to get rich. But it gave me a taste for serving, a taste for government, and that's where we need to start. So the city can be doing a lot better job in outreach to the minority communities, letting them know of employment opportunities, vacancies on boards and committees to serve, to get a taste. Everybody wants to be a city councilor, that's the top of the mountain, but it takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of name recognition, takes a lot of things to get there, and it takes time. So I think what we need to do is do a better job in outreach to the minority communities, give them these opportunities to serve on a lower level, perhaps. Let them, let them work as we all did our way up to ultimately a city council. We'd love to see a nice diverse council in the coming years. And I think we'll achieve that through a change of voting rights and outreach, and I think we can do a lot better opportunities than we're doing right now. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Amparo Delvilar.
Absolutely. So I believe building relationships, meeting people, again, like Tai Chan said, building relationships and meeting where they are. I believe social media is so big, and it's such a great platform for us to reach out to people. But more or less, reaching out to our younger adults, we have so many great programs that we have in Lowell. UTEC is an amazing, phenomenal program that has younger adults that are looking for very new opportunities. They have families that are minorities, so reaching them where they're at, building relationships, maybe going door knocking, going, reaching out, like Conway said, to religious leaders also. But meeting them where they're at, building relationships, being relatable to them, and hearing to their concerns and what they need from us because essentially they're our boss. So, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Chow.
I think at least fifty percent of the population are members of the minority group. And from what I heard, there are over sixty-five different languages spoken at the Lowell High School. So, you know, we probably have to expand, you know, minority groups beyond just Cambodian and Hispanics or Latinos. There's the Africans, there's the Middle Eastern. But even Cambodian will remember of a larger Asian groups, there are Chinese, Vietnamese, Laos, the Burmese, and so forth. So that is a complex thing. So, but I think changes or involvement starts with the top, probably at these council's level. I know that every member, every group of the minority, they want to be part of the mainstream. And when I reach out to different groups of people, they're very happy for me to be there. You know, eat their food, go watch their shows. So I really think it starts at the top. And secondly, education, you know, I've seen so many good programs at the middle school level, the high school level. Have more athletic programs in the school system.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question is from Nancy Peña, and we'll direct it first to Corey Belanger.
Do you have a plan to maintain and repair the city's streets and relieve traffic congestion?
Thank you. You know, just thinking about that, that's a great question. I mean, if elected, I can hear the complaints of traffic congestion already. Look, we're going to be facing some challenging times. As I said in my speeches, my, the next two years for elected officials, it's going to be no picnic. We're going to have lots of infrastructure going on. But the city manager, through a conversation I had in the council and their wisdom, has already brought on a second traffic engineer because we foresee these traffic issues coming. So hopefully that will help and work together on alleviating that traffic as best we can with public transportation, with bicycles, with walking. I think it's a team effort, so I think we can make some improvements there. But yes, our streets and our sidewalks do need much more improvement. What I'd like to propose is, if elected, is corporate sponsorships that we can use for a bank or a local supermarket to sponsor a park, to, so we can use that money right into it in upkeep and lighting and sidewalks that would be an increase in revenue. That's what I would propose if elected.
All right, thank you. Ms. Amparo Delvilar.
Absolutely. So streets and our pods, our street pods are very important to me. Driving down the street the other day, I was into a lot of holes and I got a flat tire. So it would definitely be one of those, one of my topics that I would like to bring, or one of my concerns that I would like to fix. I'm advocating for it, I'm not really sure about it, I'm not really well-educated on that, but definitely looking into our resources and figuring out what we can do to fix that.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Mr. Chow.
So many different type of neighborhoods in the city, and each neighborhood has different personality and characteristic, and they have different concerns. But the one common concern for all the neighborhoods are traffic and street. So, you know, it's, you know, Lowell, we forget, it is, it is a city, it's not a town. And it is a growing city, which is good. So what we are experiencing right now is growing pain. You know, we attracting more development, more commercializations, people are buying more houses, more cars, and so forth, and more jobs are here in downtown Lowell. So that's why we have all this traffic. So when, if I'm elected, I think one of the things that we can do is to set up a traffic study commission or a committee to study what's, you know, different traffic pattern, different construction, see how we can alleviate the traffic problem, because it's, as we grow, it can also hurt us because it's hurting the small businesses in downtown when the traffic is so bad, not too many people want to come to downtown, or parking and so forth.
Thank you. Mr. Chum.
Yeah, traffic is a big subject. I believe more of what people want to know is like, when is it going to be fixed? Basically, when is it going to be fixed? With, how much money am I putting this into, what, how much my pool might go into that project, right? There's the bridge next to UMass, UMass loaded, South Campus. There's the, you know, the grow-up bridge that haven't fixed for ages, right? These are some stuff that I would look into deeper to understand what is it that's stopping us from fixing this in the first place? And once we find out, how could we accelerate the process and make it transparent that people, right? People like you or me, the taxpayer, know when it's going to be fixed? Is the project even in the paper? First of all, is the project on the paper? You know, that's most important. And the second thing is more of like, I just want to know, you know, I just want to know. Let me know when the due date is, so then we can figure it out. And just bring people to a, I would say bring people to a meeting, at least have a couple of meetings about different kind of projects that's happening in our city. So at least people will be more aware of it, right? Reach out to nonprofits, reach out to OTC, like, hey, this is what happened with our city, within our city. So can you cast out the info to our community so they'll know and be more transparent about it?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
Yes, hi. Again, I think so about the streets and the sidewalks. We got to change the system or do, use common sense. I was in the Highlands, knocking doors and meeting people, and one young man come out and says, do you know what happened to me? I said, what happened? He said, look at my sidewalk. So what happens, her teenager's daughter, she get, she get hurt because she has a big hole on the, on the sidewalk, and she go to the city and they said, okay, what happened? So they put him in a lease, he says he's five years. You got to wait in the lease. You can repair it if you want, but it's no, we don't going to be able to do it right away. And he told me, but the lady in the front of my house, they called, she goes there and they make his, her sidewalk new. And I, and I have this problem, I don't know why they doing this system. I think so, we got to use common sense with the sidewalks and with the streets. We notice something is damaged, I think so, we got to go and repair it right away because no way for the, for the lease to, I think so. You got to be common sense. Bless you. Bye.
Thank you. Okay. The next question is from Gloria Politis.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Conway.
That's my, this is my favorite question. Thank you for the question, I think it's extremely important. First of all, the roads and the sidewalks, we need to, I think, to stick to a maintenance program and carry it out, number one. Number two, we talk about traffic, so very important. I put a number of motions on that I'm very excited about. One of them was asking the city manager to develop a plan addressing the upcoming construct, to address the traffic problem and the upcoming construction projects in the bridges and the roadways. I also put a plan on for the retired police officers to work on the high-traffic intersections at peak times, which I think is extremely important. And this other one I just put on, I'm so excited about it. I, it's the park and ride, take a partnership with the business, the LRTA in the city of Lowell. We have in the outskirts businesses that might have vacant spots for cars. Why not lease those? Have people lease it, we can alleviate the problem, bust these students, bust the people in. I'm sorry, I wish I had a couple of minutes on this one. But thank you for the, thank you for the question.
Okay, very good. The next question is from Gloria Politis to Ms. Amparo Delvilar.
Do you support the city council's goal of making Lowell's energy use one-hundred percent renewable by 2035? And if so, what steps would you take to achieve it?
Good question. So I am not very well aware of that, that motion that they have going on. I'm going to make the question very simple, so, I mean, I'd have to go look into it a little bit more and educate myself a little bit more on that, and then I will see if I can support it or not.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Sokarichow.
You know, we have to make the city cleaner and greener, that's our objective. We, as parents, as a community, we have to take care of our next generation, our children and their future. So what we need to do is to encourage more recycling programs, more education in the school about it, and also work with the state legislature. I know the state legislature is right now working very, very hard to get more funding through the city and encourage development that would have green energy. But even on the local level and the home-based level, you know, each individual family, they could make sure that, you know, their family members, their children also recycle. Because as a family, if one person in the family does not follow the recycling protocol, so to speak, it doesn't work. All it takes is one person that does not recycle, it will mess up the whole recycling bin.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chum.
Oh, I love this question.
Okay, great.
I fully support it. Twenty thirty-five, you got to think about it, that's not too far away. We got to work on it, look what is it? You know, we say it's committed to have a percent clean and renewable energies. So let's look deeper into that definition, how do we make it? You know, CCA, the Community Choice Aggregation. You know, CCA, the Community Choice Aggregations, is just one step, but there's many other steps. You're talking about transportation. We could have like fully electric bus. You know, that'd be amazing. We could have solar panels on different light on the street. You know, that's not using, utilizing, that's usually our tax money officially. There's many other ways too. I mean, you've got to look at the sewage system too, you know. There's the sewage system, we've got to look at it, like environmental aspects. Is it clean enough? What is it going through? Who managed it? Who regulated? You know, these kinds of stuff, I'm looking forward to go deeper and try to understand it and also making a way that we progress it into a cleaner, renewable energies. Meeting that 10, I'm sorry, 2035, you know, is close. So I want to make sure, that's really is what I'm really focusing on, and I want to make sure that we are committed to that promise and will make it in time.
Thank you. Mr. Castaneda.
I support that, of course, because we're talking about the new generations. We've got to think about, I have three kids, I have, I mean, I call my kids, but my daughter is 28, my son 24, and 170, my grandfather, and I think about them. 2030, you said, right? 30, 35, imagine that. So we have like, we will be right down there in a couple of years. So if we start now educating the people to prepare them for a better environment in the city of Lowell, that would be great, believe me. That will be the best we can do to trying to make it greater and better for the new generation. I really agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you. Great question, and yes, I do support it. And I also want to say that there were a number of motions that were put on the city council floor, and I want to give credit to Councilor Karen Sorillo, because this was something that was very dear to her heart, to try to make Lowell a healthier place to live and to take a look at, you know, clean and renewable energy, also the recycling. And once again, I think she really helped us out and was a very positive individual councilor in that area. So a lot of things have been put into place. Now it's a matter of carrying them out. It's one thing about saying them and putting them, putting them on the table, but now they have to actually, you know, come to the conclusion and make things better. And I think we also have to, we take a look at recycling, you know, it's still confusing for a lot of people. What can be recycled and what can't? I think we have to streamline that process. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Belanger.
Thank you. I want to echo Councilor Conway's comments as well, but absolutely. I think everyone here is for renewable energy, and the city must be doing all we can. We owe it to future generations of Lowell residents. But there is a lot more the city of Lowell can be doing. Now, while there's not a lot of money in the budget dedicated to such initiatives, I think we need to ramp it up in that aspect as well. However, there's lots of things we can be doing that don't cost a lot of money. You know, carrying out solar energy initiatives in the city through state and federal assistance. Transportation initiatives are all things we can be doing at a much higher level to reduce emissions into the air. Electric cars, I think a wave of the future. I went to a electric car show a few weeks ago on the boulevard. That was outstanding. You would not believe how far electric cars have come in this day and age. So I think that's an area where, you know, the city of Lowell has been weak on for a long, long time, and we've got to start getting better in that regard as well. So I am very much on board with clean air initiatives.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our last question for this evening will come from Soben Penn, and we'll direct it at David Conway.
Do you support a project labor agreement for the downtown high school project?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Do you want me to elaborate a little bit?
Well, you have a little time.
Yeah, I think that when I first heard about the project labor agreement, I thought it was a very good idea because I was told that it wasn't going to cost any more money and it would not cause a problem with the timeline. However, we got a report from the city manager and her experts that said that with a PLA, it could cost anywhere from $20 to $40 million, and it could delay it. And perhaps even the MSBA would pull out of the process. So I cannot and I would not put the high school in jeopardy at all, and that's why I couldn't support it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Belanger, we do have to maybe shorten our answers a little bit. We just have five minutes left.
Okay. Thank you. I think a PLA at this point is highly unlikely. I concur with Councilor Conway. The time was when the city council voted back in the spring on the bond. But union labor does bring a lot of positives to the table with apprenticeship programs with kids from UTech and greater Lowell Tech. There is a high level of safety involved with union projects, but unfortunately, I think the time has come and gone. If there is a way we can get it done at no cost, no additional cost, and without a delay, as Councilor Conway stated, I will take a look at it, but I think it's highly unlikely at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Amparo Delvilar.
Yes. I think it's something also that we have to look into and get, again, I have to get more educated on that. I think if it does bring more, like more things, so our union label, like UTech and our other programs can be involved in it, and it doesn't interrupt our time because our kids do need a new school, I mean, repaired school, then yes, I would be on board with it, honestly.
Okay. Mr. Castaneda.
Yes, everything will have to be the best for the education system in the city of Lowell. I really agree with that. And also for the new companies to work as a carpenter, I think so is a good idea, just to continue working in the best of the city of Lowell about the buildings and also the high school of the city, and I really, I agree with that, of course. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chum.
I support it. I support it a lot. You know, union is the heart and soul. When you say give opportunity to diverse community, that basically you're giving kids opportunity to work. You give other family opportunity to work that don't get a chance to work. You know, these, you're going to give us safety, you know, they got apprenticeships. These are something that you're looking at, and safety is the key, right? Downtown is going to, Lowell High is going to be downtown, but what's in my head right now is safety. It's basically it, safety. We don't want our kid to go through without having ACs or heat, or the quality air is bad, or drinking water is bad. So with union itself, they put that label, safety, on it. So yes, of course, I support it.
Okay. Mr. Chom.
I want to be very clear and very specific. We need to move the Lowell High School construction renovation forward, on time, on budget, and the safest way possible. And I will not risk any MSBA funding for any reason. We want to make sure we build the high school the right way. However, if there's a way, once I'm in, if I get elected, I will work with the city manager, work with the administration, to see how we can help the working families who are members of the union, because they do put work safety first. They are focused on getting, working on budget, getting work done on time. So with that said, you know, my first priority is to make sure we follow the guideline of the current MSBA, but if there's any way to get the working families involved, then I will do that.
Okay. Thank you so much. We are out of time. That was a fast-moving hour. And thank you to all the candidates for coming tonight and to our questioners. Thank you for coming. And please do tune in to Channel 8 on Thursday at 6:30 for the second and third debates for city council. You can also find the debates rebroadcast on Channel 8, posted on ltc.org/watch, and on YouTube on the LTC Lowell channel. And don't forget to vote on November 5th. I just want to give a big thanks to the LTC staff and to our members who served as crew on tonight's show. Matt Nelson was the director who produced the program, and thank you all for coming and watching. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the second round of Lowell City Council and Lowell School Committee interviews. I'm Christopher Scott. I'm the enterprise editor at The Sun. The Sun is sponsoring these debates in conjunction with Lowell Telecommunications Corp., the Camer Post in the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association. It's a great partnership, and hopefully if you're watching tonight or reading The Sun tomorrow, you'll learn something new about these candidates that you don't already know. I'd like to just introduce the candidates quickly. In alphabetical order, we have challenger John Drinkwater, incumbent Rodney Elliott. That empty seat over there belongs to challenger Marty Hogan. He ran two years ago, but apparently he couldn't be here tonight, or maybe he got stuck in bridge traffic coming over from Centerville. We have Harry Corkhary. He's another challenger. We have incumbent John Leahy, and we have former councillor Marty Laurie, who's trying to get back on the council this year. Thank you to the candidates for coming in this evening. I'd also like to introduce our esteemed panel of questioners tonight. We have Nancy Peña. She is the director-producer of Colores Latina, a show here on LTC. Thank you, Nancy. We have Gloria Politis, who is a very familiar face here at LTC. Thank you for coming, Gloria. And we have Vizal Chin from the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association. And also in the audience tonight is Elizabeth Dobbins covering for The Sun, and Soben Penn from the Camer Post. So I'd like to just set a couple of ground rules, guys, and then we'll get on with it, okay? We'll do everything in alphabetical order. You'll get a two-minute opening statement. Don't feel you have to use all two minutes because we might be able to get a question, an extra question at the end, okay? The questions, Nancy will pose the first question. I'll start it with John, then we'll go to Rodney, then we'll go to Harry, Leahy, Laurie, okay? We'll just keep going the same rotation all along. And I want to emphasize, having done these debates with some of you before, if one candidate says something, you want to respond or correct it or amend it or say something in response, please let me know, and we will allow that to happen. The more that happens, the better. I think it makes for a better debate, a more informative debate, and certainly a more entertaining debate. So, without further ado, we'll start with the opening statements. John Drinkwater, take it away. You have two minutes.
Thank you. And good evening, Lowell voters. First, I want to thank LTC for airing this and to the debate sponsors for putting this on, and to the viewers for tuning in tonight or tuning in between now and Election Day to hear what we have to say and to make an informed choice on November 5th. I'm running for city council because I have a vision for how we can keep making Lowell better and an optimism and excitement about the future of this city. And I know that as a city, we also have a lot of challenges, and like all cities, we have the challenges that are among the greatest we have in society. Poverty, hunger, housing insecurity. And as a city councillor, I will make sure to treat these issues with compassion and thoughtful policy solutions to these. I'm also excited about so many of the great things we have going on in here in the city, from progress in the Hamilton Canal Innovation District to business development, to the construction and renovation of a new Lowell High School. As the parent of three young children, I'm grateful that past and present leaders here in the city have advanced this project to break ground in a little over a year from now. And I'm grateful to the residents here in Lowell for making this very, very important investment for the future of our children. And with my three kids who are in or just entering the Lowell schools, I have a keen sense of how important these projects are, and particularly the high school, for so many parents and grandparents and potential parents of Lowell school students. And I think it's going to be one of the most important jobs of the next city council and future city councils after that, to make sure that this continues on time, on budget, in a safe way for students, and with proper oversight and accountability for everyone who's working on that project. And I have very personal reasons to work hard and ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilor Elliott.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Elliott, and I'm running for reelection to the city council. I've been married to my wife Laurie for the last 25 years, and we celebrated our 2015 anniversary this year. We have two daughters, Caitlin and Michaela, both nurses, and we have, we're proud grandparents to our three granddaughters. I've been proud to serve the city for the last 22 years. I feel I have been part of the transformation that has taken place. I love this city. I want to return to continue the progress that we have seen in the last 22 years. I have been chair of the Finance Subcommittee for the last 22 years, and by the latest reports, the city's finances are as strong as ever. We have sufficient and strong reserves. Our bond rating is one of the highest that the city has seen in decade. I feel I've played a role in that. Public safety's also been a priority number one for me. Having ample resources for our police and a fire imperative. We have to keep our city safe before anything else. Education, we exceed our net school spending by 4.8 million this year. It shows our commitment to education, and we now have a plan to improve all of our schools. So I think things are going well in the city. We have lots to do. This past year, this term, I've served as Transportation Chairman of the Transportation Subcommittee, and we have seen investment, significant investment by the state. We have lots of work to do. Gridlock in the city is almost as bad as it has ever been. However, we have $12 million being spent on Lord Overpass, 4.5 million in the Route 38 corridor. The dangerous Lowell connector is ready for investment by the state as well. So, you know, in closing, it's been an honor, and it's a privilege for me to serve on the city council. I don't forget that for one minute, and I respectfully and humbly ask for your vote on Election Day.
Thank you, Councilor Elliott. Next up, we have challenger Harry Cordicore. Harry?
Thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name? Am I getting it right?
Cordicore.
Cordicore, okay. Thank you.
Thanks to Lowell Sun, LTC, and Camer Post for organizing this debate. I want to thank all of my fellow candidates and incumbents who are running with me in this race. It has made me a better candidate. I have a background in technology, engineering, and small business. It is this background that I bring to the table in offering practical, pragmatic solutions to how we can improve the city and take the city to the next generation. I moved here several years back. I'm a homeowner here, so firsthand, I've had the opportunity to see some of the challenges we have. Many of the neighborhoods in the city are in very bad need of economic development. One of my key policy proposals includes bringing in additional commercial revenue into the city by looking at areas of opportunity, whether it is downtown or Hamilton Canal or Cross Point or any of these. If we do this, this additional revenue that we bring into the city can be used for developing the different neighborhoods, additional funding for schools, for infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. I am also very passionate about education. I'm an adjunct faculty at Cambridge College. Having worked with students, I understand firsthand the challenges and issues we face in the education system. It is important that we complete the high school project on time and on budget, but aside the high school project, we have many public schools in the city that have, that are very badly in need of preventative maintenance, and we need to do a much better job at doing preventative maintenance. Also, as a gateway city, we need more funding from the state legislature for our teachers in this community. Lastly, we need to improve the infrastructure in the city. Smart infrastructure can be done. Technological solutions can be brought to the table. In addition to that, we also need to fight opioid crisis, affordable housing, homelessness, and keep our communities safe. I commit myself to supporting all of these policy positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Next up is Councilor John Leahy, seeking reelection.
Good evening. Like to thank LTC for inviting us here, Camer Post, Lowell Sun, distinguished panelists. My name's John Leahy. I've served as your city councillor for the last few years. Before that, I had the privilege of being on the school committee. My wife Joan and I both own our own businesses, and we have three children that we brought up through the Lowell school system, through the high school, and couldn't be any prouder of them. So I was very proud and very happy to be a participant on the Lowell School Committee for 10 years. Then I won election for Lowell City Council, and I do the same thing that I did when I was on the school committee. I like to get my hands dirty. I like to get involved with the day-to-day activities that are going on. badly in need of preventative maintenance, and we need to do a much better job at doing preventative maintenance. Also, as a gateway city, we need more funding from the state legislature for our teachers in this community. Lastly, we need to improve the infrastructure in the city. Smart infrastructure can be done. Technological solutions can be brought to the table. In addition to that, we also need to fight opioid crisis, affordable housing, homelessness, and keep our communities safe. I commit myself to supporting all of these policy positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Next up is councillor John Leahy, seeking reelection.
Good evening. I'd like to thank LTC for inviting us here, Camer post, Lowell Sun, distinguished panelists. My name's John Leahy. I've served as your city councillor for the last few years. Before that, I had the privilege of being on the school committee. My wife Joan and I both own our own businesses, and we have three children that we brought up through the Lowell school system, through the high school, and couldn't be any prouder of them. So I was very proud and very happy to be a participant on the Lowell School Committee for 10 years. Then I won election for Lowell City Council, and I do the same thing that I did when I was on the school committee. I like to get my hands dirty. I like to get involved with the day-to-day activities that are going on. And if you do call, if you send me an email, I do get back to you. I try to come up with thoughtful solutions for whatever situation you call about, along with my other colleagues. We've enjoyed great economic success over the last couple of years financially. As councillor Elliott said, we're doing very well. We have a lot of money in reserve. We have new growth. We are doing a lot of work with the bridges and roads. We're going to get the traffic, the bad traffic that happens with that, but we're fixing all these bridges. We're improving the walkability, transportation, and hopefully, we're making your neighborhood better than it was before. So, my name's John Leahy. I'd ask for your consideration on the November 5th, the number three on the ballot, and I enjoy this tremendously, and I appreciate being your city councillor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Leahy. And last up for opening statements is former city councillor Marty Laurie.
Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank all the partners here for putting the debate together. I'm Marty Laurie. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Lowell. I graduated from Lowell High and UMass Lowell. I'm running because I think the city's ready to come into a crossroads. What we do in the next two to four years should outline the next 15 to 20. We have two large projects ready to come to fruition, Hamilton Canal Innovation District and Tanna Street. After years of planning and investments, it's the final stages, how we enact the final stages, which will determine if they're successful or failures. We have a new high school coming onboard that needs to be done on time and on budget. The families in this city deserve a first-class educational institute for a high school. And beyond that, we have a lot of challenges. We have to invest in sidewalks, streets, schools, a new police station. Can it all be done? I'm very positive it can be if we follow two steps. One, we keep a keen eye on finances, and two, we have a cohesive council who can work with the city manager. And I'm a big supporter of Eileen Donahue. I think she can get the job done. And finally, is the neighborhoods. You know, for over 30 years, I worked in this city as a mailman in most of the neighborhoods, and I've come to believe that the people in the neighborhoods are the fabric of the community. During my first term, I pushed for large park programs for the summer for the kids. I pushed for a problem property task force to fight the blight in our neighborhoods. And if I'm elected to the city council again, I'll continue the fight to keep the integrity of our neighborhoods intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty Laurie. And viewers, please bear with us. We have the sixth candidate just walked in, Marty Hogan. Marty, I'm glad you could make it. You must have got stuck in that bridge traffic, huh?
Yeah, Boston traffic, actually.
All right, are you prepared to? We're going to put you right on the hot seat. Are you prepared to do a two-minute opening statement?
Sure.
All right, let's go.
Good evening. I'm Marty Hogan. I am a Centerville neighbor, and I'm your neighbor, and I'm running for Lowell City Council. I'm running because I feel that our neighborhoods need representation that is current with what we're going through right now. A couple of the reasons why I decided to run were that I feel that every single area of Lowell, including yours and mine, deserves to have the best representation. And I think that we deserve to have answers and responses to our needs and our quality of life issues. I'm an IT director in my personal life, and I deal with that all day. I deal with it every day. I have worked very hard to make sure that I can work to improve the quality of my customers at work, and I want to be a person who serves you and works for you every day in the Lowell City Council. Again, I'm Marty Hogan. I believe in representing everybody equally. I believe in representing you, and it would be an honor to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty Hogan, and I'm glad you could attend tonight. So let's get right to the questions. Keep in mind, candidates, we're just going to keep it simple, and we're going to go in alphabetical order, and if you would like to respond to something that another candidate says, please just raise your hand, and we'll get on to that. So without further ado, Nancy Pena, you can pose the first question to John Drinkwater.
Thank you. So currently, 50% of the city population is represented by different ethnicities. How do we, as a city, come together not only to celebrate the culture of diversity, but also engage and include them in the decision-making process? Also, what is your plan to reach out to Camai and Spanish speakers so that they can have equal access to city resources and job opportunities?
Thank you for the question, and I think it's an important one. One reason why my wife Julie and I knew that we wanted to stay and raise our family here in Lowell is that we valued the diversity of the community. It's something that we value, and it's definitely a virtue of the city of Lowell. And I think as city councillor, the goal is to make sure that you're available and accessible to the entire community. And, you know, that means making sure to get out there, be meeting with community leaders, be out at neighborhood meetings all across the city, and making sure that each and every resident in the city knows that they can pick up the phone and call you, and you'll be responsive, or send you an email, and you'll be responsive. So just want to make sure that accessibility and availability is key, and just continuing to celebrate the diversity here in Lowell and promote it as a reason that Lowell's a very vibrant place to raise a family and that people want to locate and live.
Thank you, John. Councillor Elliott.
Shall I follow up on that question? Yeah, I think the strength of the city is our diversity. And almost every other week, you can go to City Hall, and you can see that the city celebrates and recognizes each and every country that lives in Lowell through flag raisings. I think if you also see the number of festivals that take place throughout the city and the participation that takes place, I think that's also a reflection of us as a city and as a city councillor. I attend most, if not all, of those flag raisings, and I think that's important. You know, as the mayor in 2014, I had the opportunity to become involved and engage with the Latino community and the Cambodian community, and so many others. That's one of the benefits of being the mayor, and it really is, it was really an honor to see the interest that every single national has. I will say, in the city council, I think it's important for us to continue to reach out, to make our workforce and our boards, our regulatory boards, more diverse, and we've made efforts to do that, and we need to continue to do that.
Thank you, councillor. Marty Hogan?
Well, I believe that diversity is something that should be celebrated and something that we can use always to make our city a better place to live. I wasn't born or raised here in Lowell. My wife was, but we decided to move up here because we couldn't afford to live in Boston. And one of the things that I noticed was my neighborhood over in Centerville is very much like where I grew up, South Boston. And I feel that there are many different groups of people that make our city a homogeneous group, but also that are so different that we need to celebrate each section. I want to make sure that we have access to every portal for the city, whether it's the website, the city council, our information going out. I want to make sure that that goes out in a comprehensive and equal way to everybody in the city. And I want to make sure that we are reaching out to everybody that we can to bring them into the fold, and that will be one of my jobs as your city councillor.
Thank you. Next up, Harry Corgary.
Thank you for the question. Yes, I agree with my fellow candidates here. Diversity is important. That is one of the things that makes the city unique. When you look at the history of Lowell, it is a city of immigrants. People have come from different parts of the world and have settled here. So to that extent, one of the solutions that I have is, I think we do need to provide more translation services, especially when it comes to communications from the city going towards the residents of the city. Not everybody speaks English, so I do think providing additional translation services does help. The second thing, of course, as councillor Elliott mentioned, the flag raising, that I think that's an important tradition that I believe should continue. I have been at some of these, and I think it's a wonderful thing. In addition to that, working with nonprofits in the city to promote that diversity is always a good example of, you know, public and private partnership. I would very much support that.
Thank you, councillor Leahy.
Thank you. I think in the city of Lowell, we do a great job with this. I appreciate the question. The thing, the great thing about Lowell is, as we've all said, we have the flag raisings. We have the great restaurants, and what we do is we partner. And I think in the city, what we do, we have so many partners as school committee members and city councillors and city officials. You can go almost to any corner in the city, and you have somebody from some nonprofit that's reaching out, that works with us, that helps get the word out. We help with any group and every group. So I think we do a great job with that, and it's through the public-private partnerships. And, you know, if a question comes up, we react, and we respond, and we improve. So I think we do a great job with that, and that's one of the strengths that the city has.
Thank you, councillor Leahy. And last up on this question, Marty Laurie?
Thank you. You know, over the years, the city has had a lot of outreach with the different communities. For example, in the Asian community, we have the CMAA, and at one time, the Latino community in the city had Unitas. And as people moved to the city, it would help them assimilate into the city, and I think Unitas is gone. I think as a city, we need to have a little bit more outreach with organizations, maybe we try to rebuild the Unitas. The people in those communities feel comfortable with those organizations, maybe more so than they do with us as public officials. So if we can outreach and help build those communities, and I think we can do a better job, but I'm interested to see, though, is with the new voting. I think a lot of people are intimidated running citywide. As a mailman here in the city, I heard a lot of people say they wanted neighborhood representation and be able to vote for their own mayor. So I think with the A3, if that passes, you'll see more growth in the neighborhood towards the political field, and maybe feeling a little bit more comfortable here in the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty Laurie. Next question is from Gloria Politis of LTC, and she will pose that question first to councillor Rodney Elliott.
Do you support negotiating project labor agreements for the Lowell High School construction?
Yes, I did. When this came before the Lowell City Council, I was a proponent for this reason: safety, safety of the children, ensuring that we are hiring minorities, and women, and veterans, and those types of agreements ensure that that is taking place. This is going to be a six- or a seven-year construction project. There's going to be 3,500 students in that school, and my support for the PLA was to ensure that safety measures are in place. I think it also provides accountability, and quite frankly, I think it'll contribute to cost savings when there is good oversight. So I did support it. I know that it failed, but I did think it makes some sense, and I don't think that, you know, it's going to cost additional money, but that's just my opinion. But safety is number one, and ensuring that local jobs with women, minorities, and veterans are hired for that project.
Thank you, councillor. Marty Hogan?
Well, obviously, I'm not in the council, and I wasn't there for that vote, but I want to make sure that every person that can be employed on this project from Lowell can be employed and will be employed. I want safety to be number one. I want the cost to be reflective of what the people in Lowell two years ago and what we fought for, to make sure that the cost savings and that there is no higher burden on the people. And at the same time, we want to make sure that it's the best school we can. I think that the best way to go about that is to be on top of it, make sure that we're checking everything that we are doing to build this high school, and to make sure that there's transparency with the people. The best thing is to have transparency with the people that elect us to go to city council to represent them. If the people do not know what's going on, then most of the time, even if it isn't true, they will not trust the process. We've seen this time and time again, and I want to make sure that we do have that trust.
Thank you. Candidate Corgary.
Yeah, thank you. This is an important issue, because on one hand, you have, you know, people that live in the city, union workers, who are well-trained, as councillor Elliott said, who have the skill set, and, you know, we have used union labor on many of the other projects. So there is nothing in the way of us being able to use this union labor on this project. But on the other hand, you have to weigh that against, is there truly an additional cost that this is going to impose? Because as we all know, the funding for this project is so far along, you know, any potential significant cost increase could potentially, you know, sidetrack this whole project. And I think all of us can agree that nobody wants that outcome. So these are the two factors that will have to be balanced in the final analysis. You know, as one of the candidates said, I was not on the council when this vote, you know, came about. Should this come up again, that would be how I'm going to balance these two factors in making a final decision. More importantly, I don't have all the data in front of me when it comes to this particular cost issue. I think that is something I would need to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leahy?
Thank you. At this time in the game, where the high school is on track to be built, no, we couldn't do a PLA for the high school. Did it sound like a good idea when it was introduced to me? Sure. But it was introduced too late. The information we got from the city manager, from her office, is that it would have added costs, and at this time, at this stage of the game, my feeling is that it's in the hands of the construction company. They know the rules that we set. We want to hire as many local, as many women, do as many apprentice programs. So it's in the hands of the construction company right now, and they're going to do what's best to get this high school built under our direction. And the one thing I did want to add in the beginning of this process, I don't know why the state, when they give you the money to build a school, if you're building a school on the same exact...
Footprint?
Footprint. It should have been built at night, or its second shift, not during the first shift.
You're at zero. Thank you, sir. And Marty Laurie?
I like PLAs. I'm a union member. I used to work with the National Association of Letter Carriers, doing their legislative work with members of Congress. The problem I have with the PLA is not the cost. I looked at what I could find online, some of the old PLAs that were used in the state. I don't see an additional cost. To me, the problem is, we're three years or so into the planning, has the time run out? We have two possible lawsuits against the city, and we don't know what the MSBA is going to do. If we do sign it, they don't use them. If we really want to go in this direction, and we can't do it on the high school, we have a police station that's going to be built, a PLA, looking into a PLA with the unions for that, and also, we'd have a lot of construction in the city: bridges, roads. Do we look down a road towards a reasonable ordinance to hire local labor? And that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. And John Drinkwater?
Thanks. I do support project labor agreements. I think there would be definite benefits for the city, many of which were just mentioned. But I want to try to use my minute here to push back on some of the numbers that have been thrown out there regarding the potential cost of a project labor agreement to this project, which I believe are not true and actually impossible. Since May, when this was brought up at the council, the number of 40 million has been thrown out there as a potential cost increase, which was cited, of all places that could have been cited, a 13-year-old study from a self-declared conservative think tank, which said that project labor agreements can potentially add 15% to the overall construction cost, which, for the high school, is about $270 million. That $270 million, though, does not represent the craft labor costs. In public construction, the actual cost of wages in construction is about 20% of the overall project, which for this project will amount to about $68 million. So how we could even possibly arrive at a $40 million cost increase on only $68 million in wages, which, by the way, the prevailing wage and union rate supply, just sounds impossible to me.
Okay, Mr. Drinkwater, thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to go off script for a minute and stay on this issue just for one minute, particularly with councillor Elliott, Marty Laurie, and John. The city manager has been quoted in The Sun and on the radio station, saying that if the project labor agreement was instituted, it would cost, I think, add $40 million to the project and possibly derail it. Councillor Elliott, you said you don't believe there's any additional money. I think, Marty, you said the same thing. John, you're pushing back on that. So can you each take about 30 seconds and just talk about that, the figure that's coming out of the city manager's office? Is that, you're basically saying that that number is not correct. So this is your opportunity to expand on that. Councillor Elliott?
Sure. No, I don't think there's any evidence to suggest that there are going to be such extravagant costs. In fact, I happen to think the opposite, as I mentioned in my response. With an agreement in place, it's going to guarantee a number of things: local jobs, et cetera, apprenticeship programs. But, you know, the notion that it's going to cost an additional $40 million never was really justified where that money was going to come from. Safety is of paramount importance, as I mentioned... Safety is of paramount importance, as I mentioned again. Accountability. You have project labor agreements. There are regular meetings, there's consistent oversight, and I think that's going to be important on a seven-year, $343 million project.
Thank you, Councilor. Marty?
Thank you.
And John?
As I said earlier, I have some background with labor agreements and not in construction. But when I heard the cost, I went back and I Googled some of the PLAs that I could find. And in the state of Massachusetts, everyone basically bids the same wage. But the contracts I found, the company, the construction company rules the contract. They do the hiring, the firing, the layoffs. They determine who comes and who goes and when. So they have a large say in the cost, not so much the labor agreement or the labor unions. They work for the construction company. So I couldn't find it, as I said, I'm not an attorney. That was my opinion. If it's $40 million, I'd like to see it. I'd like to see the proof.
Well, you said you were supportive of the city manager. She has it, so maybe you can get it from her. John Drinkwater?
Thank you. And I want to be really clear about this to the voters out there, that in public construction, we have a state law in Massachusetts called the prevailing wage law, which in this case guarantees that the wages on this project will be set by local collective bargaining agreements. So essentially, the union wage rates already apply to this project. And I mentioned the study that's been cited for the potential cost increase. You could find just as many, if not many more, studies out there that actually prove that project labor agreements can be effective at ensuring projects come in on time and on or under budget. And we've used one here in Lowell at the Songus Arena, and it worked effectively. So I believe there's actually an argument that project labor agreement would have great benefits for the city.
Thank you. And John, you want to respond?
Yeah. So I think we're all missing a point here. The point is, nobody on the council is against the PLA per se. What happened was, we set the price for that high school. And then we tried to negotiate deals and the 40 million, it could have been 60 million, it could have been 10 million, but they used a percentage. And that money came in after the price was set. And there's no money to put forward after that price was set. It's like trying to negotiate extra features after you've settled the price on a new car. You don't do that. The price was set at the high school, we agreed on it, and then we cannot add a dime to it.
Fair enough. Rodney or, yeah, Rodney, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. You know, interestingly enough, we took a vote a number of years ago prior to the construction of the Judicial Center on the Lowell City Council. It was a 9-0 vote. Now, that was a state project, but it was a 9-0 vote to support a project labor agreement for the same reasons that we're talking about now. And it didn't pass, it wasn't a PLA, and that project is over budget and it's well behind schedule. So I think there's, I think there's merit to, you know, to this PLA.
Everybody good on this? We'll move on to the next question?
Sure.
Okay. Wiesel, you have the next question, and could you please pose that to Marty Hogan?
Which election system option do you support and why?
Well, thank you for that question, and it's very, very important right now that we discuss this. Two years ago, I ran for city council, and at the time, I was for a hybrid system for our election system. And the reason being is, is that in a city that is growing and becoming more and more diverse, and a city that has the up-and-coming issues that we have, you have two different types of issues that confront the people. You have neighborhood or local area issues, and you have citywide issues. The at-large would be used to help the whole city issues, three councilors. The districts will help to make sure that our city's lights and our neighborhood's safety and our roads and our infrastructure are taken care of. I believe that that's the safest way. And just one thing on the other option, ranked choice voting.
Please wrap it up.
It seems like a random choice voting to me, so it's going to make it more complex and more difficult for the people.
Thank you, sir. Harry?
Yeah. So we have two options that is going to be on the November ballot, as we know. One is the A three, which is the hybrid option, the district and the at-large. The second one is the at-large with ranked choice voting. While cities like Cambridge have tried ranked choice voting, and they do that today, my concern with introducing that here in Lowell for the first time, a lot of the elderly and senior voters really had to be trained in, you know, what that is and how to do it. And you have to rank people appropriately. So I'm a little concerned about whether votes are going to be thrown out, disenfranchised, met a whole bunch of other things. I do think the A three model is a more simpler model. There is also, I can tell you, a great appetite among the different neighborhoods within the city to have that district representation, because you want to be close to your counselor, you want to be able to talk to them, you want to be able to take your local issues to them. So I think it's a better model, I think, and for that reason, I'm supporting the A three.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Leahy?
I'm leaning towards the ranked choice. I believe that, I just, right now, I don't see how the districts kind of would work. I think it's going to pit neighborhood against neighborhood or district against district. I understand we're going to have three at-large, but I just think that the ranked choice gives us more of what this whole lawsuit was about. It's more of going to diversify the council better than district will. District is more for your neighborhoods, and the whole lawsuit was brought up to diversify the council, and I think ranked choice will do it. It may be a little bit more complicated. I believe we did this back in the 50s before we changed, but I think that's the best way to reach the goal that we've had this lawsuit over, so.
Thank you, John. Marty Laurie?
I like the A three. As I said earlier, I think it gives more people an opportunity to run. They don't have to run citywide, they can run in their neighborhoods. And I think it may bring out more voters. And also, as I said earlier, as I was saying, I was a mailman and people used to like the idea of neighborhood representation. Most issues in the neighborhoods are abandoned homes that aren't kept, streets that aren't paved. They want someone they can call in the neighborhood, someone they know, someone they're very familiar with. The only thing I'm concerned about is the A three, and I don't think it's been decided yet, is the mayors. How are you going to decide the mayor? Worcester, the top vote getter who runs at-large, I believe is the mayor. That's the other thing people want, is one, representation; two, vote on a mayor.
Thank you, Marty. John Drinkwater?
I support the A three hybrid option. I think it'll accomplish a number of things. I think both options would likely have the outcome of producing more diversity on the council, which is a great thing. But I think the A three hybrid model has the additional benefits of lowering the barrier of entry to run. Running in a district is going to cost a lot less money. And for someone who's working a full-time job, it'll also give them the ability to get out across an entire district on foot and meet their neighbors. And through doing that, residents of that neighborhood will actually have more face-to-face interaction and feel more connected with their district counselor and feel more comfortable reaching out if they do have an issue. So I think the A three will be a great thing for the city. And I actually want to take a step back and just, you know, appreciate how significant this moment is in the city. I don't just support the A three option because I think it's the best out of the two. I think it's a great thing. And I want to thank the plaintiffs who actually brought this lawsuit forward to force a change from the status quo. They took a lot of risk in doing so, and I appreciate their efforts in getting us here.
Thank you, John. And last on this question, Councilor Elliott?
Yeah, I supported the, I support the district at-large representation model. I supported it back in February of 2017 when I filed a motion on the floor of the city council for two reasons. We talked about civic engagement and how do we get people more involved in not only the regulatory boards and commissions, but also the elective process. And any candidate that has run for elective office realizes when you have to run citywide, unless you're wealthy and have either good name recognition or a lot of time in your hands, it's very, very difficult to canvass this entire city. Secondly, I do think that it provides better representation across the spectrum of this entire city, neighborhood by neighborhood, section by section. We all know, we are a city of neighborhoods. And I think it's important to have diversity, and I also think that it's important to have geographic representation across the city. I hope it passes. I think it's going to make us a stronger, more civically engaged community.
Thank you, Councilor. We'll switch back to Nancy now. Nancy, could you ask your second question? We can start with Harry Cora Carey, please.
Thank you. So previously, there were, excuse me, previously, there were several councilors who support immigrants, especially the Latino community in Lowell. However, today, there are some councilors who have changed their rhetoric and see the immigrants as a threat. And now, they are seeking to deport families who have lived in the city for years and have contributed to the economy. What plan do you have for Lowell immigrants? Should Lowell be a sanctuary city?
Yeah, so I know that there was a motion that was made at one of the city council meetings. Unfortunately, I thought it was sort of politically motivated, to be honest with you. I didn't think that motion needed to be made. This is an election year, so people are trying to score political points, I get it. What that does is it pits community against community, neighbor against neighbor, and I think that's a wrong thing, prescription for the city. I go back to what I said earlier, which is, we need to, you know, there needs to be a public-private partnership between the city manager's office and nonprofits, nonprofits that work with minority communities, whether it is the Asian-American community, the Hispanic community, and involve these different communities in civic engagement and, like I said, provide translation services. I think if we do all of this, automatically, that relationship between the city and the communities will begin to improve. I believe this is what we need to do, and I thought it was unfortunate that, you know, for political reasons, that was taken up. And I'm glad the city council voted the way they did.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Leahy?
I don't really understand the question. Can you read it again? Like, what's your, I don't understand what your point is.
Well, the point is clear. The point is that basically before, almost the whole city councilors were supporting Latinos as an immigrant in Lowell. But now, I believe it was like a month ago, it was a motion that immigrants, especially the Latino, is a threat right now in Lowell, and they are looking at the protection.
I don't think anybody's treating anybody as a threat. I think that that motion that was brought on was, had something totally different to do. But there is not one of the councils that does not support any community in this city. That was a whole different thing with the sanctuary cities, her, the motion.
You're referring to Councilor Horsey, correct?
The motion was said specifically for federal funding. But, you know, certain councilors go to every flag raisin, support every community. So I don't really agree with that. I think in the city, we can always do a great job, we can always do a better job, but we're all, most of our, all of our parents, our grandparents moved to the city and, you know, you go through different stages when you move to the city, but I don't think we've ever tried to not make anybody feel not welcome.
Thank you, John. Marty Laurie?
I think the city has handled the situation well, especially the police department. They don't ask. What they do is, if they make an arrest, they don't look at immigration status. And I think the police department has the right policy here in the city. I've been here 40 years and I've worked in the neighborhoods. I know a lot of members of the Latino community, and I don't think they should be afraid. Again, I think we should look to incorporate organizations like Unites, where people can go and speak. But that's a national issue to go farther. And I know Congress and the government has in the past had programs where people could, like an amnesty program to sign up. And I think that's something we should pursue if we wanted to do with a council, to ask a congressman or a senator to maybe look at that bill. But I think the police department in the city has done the right thing. They just don't really ask.
Thank you. John Drinkwater?
I agree. I think the Lowell Police Department, you know, without any specific direction from the council, has determined that the best way to do their jobs and to enhance public safety in this city is to not inquire about immigration status and routine interactions with police. Everybody who lives in the city of Lowell needs to be sure of the fact that if they pick up the phone and call the police or they're in an interaction with a police officer, that they're not going to inquire about their immigration status and they'll be comfortable reporting crimes or if they feel unsafe. And I'll also say, in terms of making sure that our immigrant communities who do contribute to our economy here in Lowell feel welcome, the city council should operate in the same way. The city council is elected to represent residents of the city of Lowell, not based on citizenship status or anything like that. So I want it to be very clear to all Lowell voters and all Lowell residents out there that the city council is elected to make sure that we're representing everybody who makes their home here in Lowell.
Thank you, John. Councilor Elliott?
Well, I think the question was, do we support a sanctuary state? That was a motion that was before us, and I just want to remind, I guess I've been around long enough, to remind voters that it was three years ago that a very similar motion came, a trust ordinance that was voted down 9-0, and there was unanimous support. So on this photo, I think that we should be a sanctuary state or sanctuary city. No, I don't. I think that a sanctuary state, the basis is on trust. And the police department has a policy and it's based on trust, and it has been very successful. I don't want to hinder law enforcement efforts when we have a major drug problem. We just seen the last couple of weeks, we have a spate of, I mean, we have some violent activity taking place in the city. I don't think that we can hamstring our law enforcement to not work or cooperate with federal or state law enforcement. That being said, I don't think that we should be taking families away from their children and crimes that have been committed 10, 20, 30 years ago. I think that the police have to focus on more important and significant criminal activity taking place in the city.
Thank you, Councilor. And lastly on this question, Martin Hogan?
As I've stated publicly before, there are different levels of our government for these different instances. The city of Lowell, the people are electing a city council to represent them, to take care of things that are on a local level as far as roads, utilities, things of that sort. The police, as has been stated by Councilor Elliott before, have done a pretty good job at making sure that they're taking care of the safety of the people in Lowell. And I wouldn't want to hinder that. That being said, with the expansion of drugs and violence, I think that there are some times that the federal agencies have to be called in. That being said, sanctuary cities, I don't, I would not support a sanctuary city. We need to make sure that, we are making sure that everybody is safe in this city. That includes our immigrant populations, but that also means that we need to make sure that we're taken care of and making sure that the drug dealers and the criminal offenders are not staying here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next question goes to Gloria. And Gloria, I believe you will pose that to John Leahy. We're watching the clock here. Hopefully, we have a get in, one more round of questions.
All right. The housing market in Lowell is slim to none. It's very difficult for low-income and middle-income families to obtain substantial housing opportunities. There's a waiting list for Section 8 vouchers. There are not a lot of homes available for purchase or rent, and rent and housing prices are too pricey to afford. What will you do to help Lowell generate and build a housing market that is affordable to the whole community?
Thank you. It's a difficult question because with progress comes rising prices. I think what we have to do is try to, on one side, we have to try to create more jobs that pay better, so people have the money to invest into their community or live where they want to live. You know, we do have a handful of investors that come into the city and they buy up some property, and then they want to get their return on their investment. Rents have risen, and the housing market, those prices have risen too. I mean, I don't know how my children are going to be able to afford the down payments to buy their houses either. So I don't, I don't have all the answers right now, but I think from my approach would be to attack it with better-paying jobs and careers.
Thank you, John. Marty Laurie?
You know, the housing market, right now Lowell's a hot commodity, so the prices are up. And unfortunately, if we don't build a new high school on time, if we don't invest in the other schools, as I said earlier, you're going to see that market drop. That's what we don't want. One of the things we can do is work with organizations like the Coalition for a Better Acre, CTI, organizations that really work within the community for affordable housing. During this campaign, one of the things I've talked about is that the city, they sell out to investors the homes. I would like the city offer them to people in the neighborhood, first-time home buyers. If they have an opportunity to buy the home, maybe they can keep the rents down. But I think in a program like that, where the city has excess property, allow people within the neighborhoods to buy it, and you'll strengthen the neighborhood. If ownership in the neighborhood, then I think it becomes a safer and cleaner neighborhood.
Thank you. John Drinkwater?
Yeah, well, I think increasing housing stock is one of the things that we definitely need to do. I think there are organizations here in Lowell, the Coalition for a Better Acre, the Lowell Housing Authority, that are working with developers to make sure that we are increasing housing stock, and we're increasing stock that includes, you know, a mix of income levels, including affordable housing. I do think it's problematic when developers do come in here with their own financing, where they don't need the assistance of a CDC or the housing authority, and they're building housing that is all at what they describe as market rate, but where the lowest unit is, from what I can tell, month to month, is actually more than my mortgage for a single-family home. I think we need to make sure as a council that all new housing development does include, you know, units that include a mix of income levels, and specifically including affordable units, to make sure that people don't get pushed out of neighborhoods where they've been established.
Thank you, John. Councilor Elliott?
Yeah, it's a challenge. It's a challenge on the state level, on the national level, on the federal level. I think in the city, we do great work when it comes to housing development. Certainly, we have the housing authority, who, interestingly enough, has a program trying to create more homeownership, trying to get rid of some of the rental units. Section 8, yes, if we can always do more, we have to help them. But when it comes to economic development, I'm thinking some of the projects that we had in our mills, mass mills, boot mills, Latin furniture, and the latest development that'll, there's a public hearing next week, has a low-to-moderate income component, and I think that's the balance that we need to continue to strike. Market-rate housing, attracting working families to live in these units, to sustain the downtown, and I think it's important. The other element is the governor, we filed the bill just today to, you know, the surrounding towns, there are zoning regulations and voting requirements that restrict the development of more affordable housing. I think the city has done great work. I think it's, the towns have got to develop as well and help out...
Thank you, Councilor Elliott. And Martin Hogan?
So I don't believe there's one answer to this, and it's very complex. The biggest thing is that we need to bring and increase the number of equitable jobs that are in Lowell. We need to make sure that we have people who live here who can afford to live here and continue to afford. That being said, I also believe that we need to make sure that when we're developing houses, that we don't go and fill up every empty available space that we have. We have a lot of abandoned, we have a lot of foreclosed houses, and I would like to see the city take an opportunity to work on those and help to move those on to local developers. Additionally, I think that we need to work on affordable rentals and affordable housing at many different levels. There's not just one single affordable level, there are several different levels, and I think that's where we're missing. Finally, I think that we need to push on our residents that it's, there's an equity to staying in Lowell and to be part of this community.
Okay, Martin, I'm going to have to cut you off, just so we can get one more round of questions. Harry, but your last, on that last question on housing, please.
So, again, I think this is one of those issues that we need to resolve. So there is a proposal, actually, interestingly enough, it's very timely. It's a tax incentive financing for real estate companies that can come in, develop apartments, and as part of developing those apartments, a certain portion of it will be what you call as affordable housing. There's a hearing at the mayor's office on October 25th at 5:00 PM. You know, this is something I think will greatly help, but right now, it's being planned for downtown. But if that actually works, I think that would be a good example for us to follow in the different neighborhoods around the city. In addition to that, you know, as others have mentioned, you know, creating more housing stock by, in partnership with CBA and LHA, I think would also be good.
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, gentlemen, we've run out of time, but we'll be in touch over the course of the next several days at LTC and through the Camer post and the Sun. Thank you for participating tonight. Thank you to all our community partners. We'll take a short break, and then we'll be back for 60 minutes with six additional city council candidates. Thank you for tuning in to the fifth and last debate, this one featuring six candidates for Lowell City Council. I'm Chris Scott, I'm the Sun Enterprise Editor. I'd like to thank our community partners for putting these debates on, the Sun, Lowell Telecommunications Corp., the Camer Post, and the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association. With us covering the debate tonight, Shobin Penn, the editor of the Camer Post, and Elizabeth Dobbins, who does a great job covering City Hall and the School Committee for the Sun. I'd like to introduce our three esteemed question posers tonight. On my far end, I have Nancy Pena. Nancy is the director and producer of the Coloris Latina Show here on LTC. Next to her is Gloria Politis. She's a familiar face here, a very friendly face at LTC. And next to Gloria is Vizal Chin from the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association. The councilors include former mayor, current city councilor Rita Mercyer. Rita, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Current Councilor Vesna Noon.
Thank you.
To Vesna's right is Dave Valet, who's trying to get back on the city council, trying to get on the city council, he's tried before. To my right is Dan Rourke, former city councilor, current mayor Bill Samaras, and Jeff Thomas, thanks for coming in, Jeff, who's trying to get on the city council for the first time. I'd just like to just mention a couple of ground rules. We're going to keep it simple, we're going to do everything in alphabetical order. The candidates will be given an opportunity to make a two-minute opening statement. There will not be any closing statements. Hopefully, we'll get as many questions in as we can. And as I said to the candidates prior to going on air, if they choose to respond or mix it up with someone else who said something that they disagree with, by all means have at it, we will allow that to happen. So, without further ado, Rita, you want to take it away with your opening statement, please?
I will. Thank you very much. First, I want to thank all the partners here for allowing democracy at its best to take place. My name is Rita Mercyer. I'm running for the Lowell City Council. I've been a city councilor for the past 24 years, and I've enjoyed every bit of it. The reason I get into this is because I love to help people. I have been very busy for the past two years. I like to justify my existence on the council. We'd like to have public safety as number one and to make, maintain the proper level of staffing. We have done that with our public safety personnel, with the police and fire. We have a new downtown police substation. I think school and education is very important, and to maintain the buildings that we already own. I questioned the Collins Report, and they told us that nobody had applied since 2014 for any MSBA funding. I said that we should do that, and we have been awarded two roofs and six boilers spread across eight schools. Neighborhood issues, I've contacted the sheriff's office to clean the First Street Hill, and I got eight inmates, along with the sheriff's department, and it took two days to accumulate 65 bags of trash and six dumpsters. My passion is the seniors as well, and on September 18th, through my motion, we have received a specially-designed and state-of-the-art bus. I have always brought my, your concerns to City Hall. I'm nothing more than a messenger. You have a problem, I bring your issues to City Hall. On November 5th, on Tuesday, please consider me for one of your nine votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Mercyer. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, the partner, for hosting this event, and thank the voter of Lowell for the last two years for elect me to the council. I'm honored to serve you and the city. The city council has had many success. There's more to be done. You know, the issue with the public safety, we are in the support of public safety, the council. We work to improve infrastructures. We support the continued education and making sure that all schools perform at a top level. We can do all that and more if we work together. I also believe that in encouraging engagement and conversation between law enforcement, between public safety and the community, and between the city and the community. I think the city is very diverse, therefore, you know, we need to have the reflective of the population that we serve, and those is important. I think there's more we can do in term of looking for new revenue, and at the same time, using resource and partnership that we have to improve our city. We can participate in Community Preservation Act, to use that money to build, to fix our recreational open space, affordable housing. We can continue to seek funding from MSBA to fix our school. We can use the revenue from recreational marijuana to fix our municipal building. We can do all that if we work together, and I respectfully ask for one of your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Vesna. Dave Valet?
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? I'm going to start with a little fast bio, and I was born in Lowell, came from a split family, ended up in a Franco-American orphanage. At five years old, I lived there till my grandmother adopted me about 18 months later. I lived in public housing on an army cot in my grandmother's living room at 374 Adam Street till I got married, my high school street heart, when I was 19 years old. My wife Lynn also lived in Lowell housing, also, she made her wedding dress in home ec at Lowell High School. We married in 1980, next year will be 40 years. I have three boys and four grandchildren. Graduated Lowell High School in 1979, and I went to work. I broke our cycle of poverty, now own a home, and the reason why I brought that up is because our struggles are real when you grow up. Lowell was a great place for me to go from that to here. I started the Acre Neighborhood Group Action, collaborated with many people, and took back the North Carmen. We brought you Decade Away, a 1,200-foot outside art and poetry gallery. I am the health agent for the town of Drakot, but before that, I was a senior code enforcement officer for the city of Lowell. I started that needle program you hear so much about. I just started picking up the needles, I started documenting where they were. We had some, I went to the parks, the playgrounds, the school areas, and I started collecting them, I started marking down where they were. I'd walk the snowbanks at the end of the winter, because when the plows went one way, they put the snow here. When the people shoveled, they put it on top. As the sun melted, you could see the needles, and kids loved playing in snowbanks. So I'd walk, and I did this all on my own for the safety of our children and our community. The other one that we did is we started the need program in the city of Lowell, Neighborhood Enhancement Enforcement Division. We went after the 12 worst landlords in the city, and we gave them the full enhancement of our code enforcement actions, went in with the police, the fire, myself and the building commissioner. And we made sure that the people who were causing us problems, that we were no longer their babysitter, we're no longer to be there to do their maintenance programs. We told them that if you continue this, we will close you, and we did.
Can you wrap it up, Dave?
We got rid of some of the worst things. Thank you so much, and please look forward to one of your votes on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Chris. Hi, my name is Dan Rourke, and I'm running for election to Lowell City Council. I was first elected to the Lowell City Council in 2013, I served two terms until 2017. During that time, Lowell experienced tremendous positive growth. As chairman of the Public Safety Subcommittee, Lowell Police and Lowell Fire had all-time highs of personnel. Major crime in the city decreased. As chairman of the Neighborhood Subcommittee, we took Neighborhood Subcommittee meetings to each neighborhood in the city of Lowell. We dealt with neighborhood issues such as traffic and parking and court enforcement. I'm hoping to return to the council to help continue the positive growth the city of Lowell dealt with during my time on the council for those four years. I ask for your vote November 5th to help lead Lowell in a positive direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor Samaras?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for setting up this debate. Thank you, I really appreciate this. My name is Bill Samaras, I'm running for city council. This will be my fourth term as a city councilor, but this year, I've been blessed, this term, by being chosen mayor of the city of Lowell. Actually, I've had two great jobs in my life. One is headmaster of Lowell High School, where the high school saw and received many national pieces of recognition for work being done. We were able to establish a scholarship fund, which was in the millions of dollars, and we did this by working with community leaders, members of Lowell School Department, and other educators, and we were able to do this. As mayor of the city of Lowell, I've worked with not only the city council and the school committee, but many nonprofits and many community leaders on making this city the best mid-sized city in the country. If you look at some of the things that we've accomplished, when you talk about the voting rights issue, through mediation, we came out with a process or a model that the Boston Globe described as a real model for the rest of the country to look at on how to resolve a situation, rather than costing millions of dollars of tax mayor money in litigation. The Hamilton Canal area, the Innovation District, the courthouse will be open this spring. We have a signature bridge, we're building a new garage. We have taken care of all of the infrastructure. If any company or developer wants to now settle into the Hamilton Canal area, it's ready to be settled. 110 Canal Street is completely booked. I'll finish it off by saying, as mayor, I think I've tried to run the city council and school committee like a board of directors, and we've worked very well with the city manager to put the city on the fast track for success.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Thomas?
Hello, my name's Jeff Thomas, and first of all, I'd like to thank all the sponsors for holding this event tonight. I'm running for some change in the city. I've been in this city for 43 years, born and raised, I live in South Lowell. I believe that there's some changes that need to be done in this city, and I'm looking to effect that change. Public safety is absolutely number-one concern of mine, and I think that we need to find more ways to fund some of the projects, not only, you know, for the economic development going on, but also for public safety with the fire departments and the police departments. The development in the city, it's all coming, we all realize that. I'm looking to have the city enact a responsible employer or hiring ordinance for some of these contractors. We've got people coming into this city that won't stay in the city and spend their money in this city, and that's what I'm looking to do, have these city residents in this city, stay in this city, live in this city, spend their money in this city, and keep the money in the city. So I humbly ask for everyone's vote on November 5th. I'm last on the ballot, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Jeff. So we'll get into the questioning now. Gloria, you lead off. Your question should be addressed to Councilor Mercyer, please.
Which election system option do you support, and why?
Thank you, Gloria. I support the hybrid system, 8-3, eight districts and three at large. I think that, can I just back up to the very beginning? First of all, I like the system the way that it is, but we do have a federal consent decree that says that people aren't happy with it. I have to abide by the law, and it's not what I like, it's what the law says, and so that would be the option that I would choose. I think that the ranked choice voting is a little bit confusing. I think that if people are telling me that it should be fair for everybody to have a chance, I agree with that. I think that, I thought that I worked pretty hard, and that's why, but let me just say, I think that if people want it, then when they vote, I will support whatever the voters say.
Thank you, Councilor. Vesna?
Thank you very much. Low pride ourselves of our diversity, and that is our great strength. Yet, if you look at it, it doesn't really reflect on the city government. So I believe that, you know, the 8-3 certainly will ensure the diversity that you needed. Candidate from those districts can run, and they can engage, and they can get a high-voter turnout because of that. So small districts and candidate don't have to raise thousands and thousands of dollars to run on a race. Those are the two things, it's very important. You get people to engage in the discussion in the city, and how to make the city better, and that is the best choice. 8-3 will be the best option. Again, like Councilor Mercyer, I will support the voters, and should the voter choose either one of those, but my option, it will be the 8-3 option. Thank you.
Thank you, Vesna. David?
Yes, my option is, I agree, 8-3, because everybody's vote should matter. With 8-3, with district representation also, with the neighborhoods, I'm a neighborhood person, and I understand my acre and the people and the issues that we may have. It also helps with diversity, and it also helps when you're trying to get out there. I've been trying to canvass this whole city, and my God, trying to get from one to the other and everything, it'll be so much easier to talk to your neighborhood, the people can come out, we're going to have a major minority areas, which will help on that one. The other one, too, is I've been to a lot of these meetings, and they've been trying to explain ranked choice voting, and they never seem to get to the end of it, and it just doesn't seem right. But one of them, that they said, when they used the Cambridge method of this, is they said that they put, like, let's say it's 10,000, everybody who reaches 10,001, you get in. So, but then they say...
So, but then they say that at a certain part, they only use sampling of votes, and there's no way that things should just be sampled. My vote counts, your vote counts, everybody votes counts. You shouldn't have a sampling of votes. We fought too hard for it. It's a hundred years since the woman's got the right to vote. This year, everybody votes counts. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Dan Rourke.
Yeah, unfortunately, the city's in a position where it does have to change. I feel with both options that are available to us. There's not enough information for city residents on either option. I feel there's a lot of details that are not decided yet are either raw, but unfortunately, we're in this position where we do have to choose. With that being said, I would go with the hybrid, eight-three. I would hope that with the three-at-large candidates that do run, the highest vote, that position would be for mayor, the highest vote. I think that would increase voter turnout, and I also think that that would bring much more candidates to the race, and I think that would definitely increase participation and interest in the city council election.
Thank you. Mayor Samaras.
When I was first asked as to where I stood, I declined, stating that I wanted to wait till the people had a chance to give their input. Both methods, whether it's ranked choice or the hybrid system, will work according to the courts and are acceptable by the litigants. But after giving this a lot of thought and having to make a choice at this point, I would go with the hybrid system of the three and eight. It does make sense if, it gives people a feeling that they are closer to the action, so to speak, more participatory. But with that said, it depends on what the vote will state. If the voters go, whatever direction the voters go, I really feel that we should take that direction.
Thank you. And Jeff Thomas.
And I am also a supporter of the eight-three hybrid option. I believe that there's a few neighborhoods in the city that are not totally forgotten, but there's some forgottenness up in those neighborhoods. I think that even if you are elected a district councillor, you still have to deal with the overall city as well. So I know that people are worried that you're just gonna focus on your one neighborhood, but that's not really the case. You still have to deal with the rest of the issues of the city, just like they do now. But I do believe the neighborhoods need their own voice for the residents of that neighborhood, and I plan on supporting that. I've been a supporter of that, and thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We're gonna stay on this issue just for a minute. Vesna, you have thirty seconds.
If I may just want to add that, you know, this council could just vote whichever option, but this council chose to put this out there on non-binding so that we hear from voter which option they like. And with that, we then, as a council, will vote to endorse or not endorse this. Like Consular Mercier, I will endorse whichever option, though said that eight-three is the option.
Rita.
Thank you, and the consent decree never specified guidelines so that I, living in Belvedere, could run in the acre. I thought that was very unfair, so I made a motion, which this council supported unanimously, that you have to live in the district for at least a year before to run for that position, which I thought, that's only fair. It's not fair for me to live somewhere and run across the city at that, so we all voted.
Dan.
Yeah, and this council, and no fault of their own, was put under a lot of pressure on deadlines, you know. They really had no choice in the matter of, it's had to be put forward to them, you know, December 3rd was coming, regardless of whether they wanted to or not. So this is the spot that the city was putting in, that the council was putting in, and the options put out there, it had to be agreed upon, the judge had to approve it, and so forth. So I just, I just think when talking and campaigning, you know, to Consular Mercier's point, you know, she could run in South Lowell, or, you know, Mr. Mous could run in the Highlands, you know, me being from Pataqueville, you know, I could run in the acre, so it's just, that's just the point where it's difficult. You know, I know that Consular Noon brought up, you know, the point, you know, at a meeting a little while ago, and the answer was brought up.
Okay, I'd like to, yeah, wrap it up. I'd like to move on. Bill, do you have a quick follow-up?
No, in talking with the, because I dealt with the federal judge on this issue, and the one thing is, he was supportive of where Lowell was going, and he felt that the community was listening, and that's very important for people to know that. And when we talked about the idea of, even though it was a non-binding referendum, that the city council alone could make the choice, he supported us going to the community because he felt he was, we were correct, that that's one of the best ways to get the community involved, and that's why we did that.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on now. Vizal, you have the next question. Please direct that to Consular Noon.
The housing market in Lowell is slim to none. It is very difficult for low-income to mid-income families to obtain substantial housing opportunities. And they say, waiting list for the Section Eight vouchers, there is not a lot of home available to purchase or rent, and the housing prices are very pricey to afford. What will you do to help Lowell generate and build a housing market that is affordable to the whole community? The housing crisis is not just in the city of Lowell, in the state, it's in all in the nation as well. City of Lowell is fortunate to have partnership in the city like Lowell Housing, like the CBA, like CTI, and also we have developers coming in with a tip, with tax incentive to build affordable housing. Low-income, medium-income, Wynn Project is one of those that's going to be next week, next Tuesday, they're gonna come before the council to get that proposal, it's going in the Hampton Canal District. So I also propose in my, in my motion, and supported by my councillor, that is, to have the city participate in the Community Preservation Act. Those, one of the options for the Community Preservation Act is that to use money either for open space, for recreational, for the historical and affordable housing. We can use the money to do that affordable housing, helping a nonprofit and profit organization working together to address this issue together.
Thank you, Vesna. Dave Willett.
Yes, I wish I had ten minutes on this conversation.
You have one minute.
Two, two, and I'm using it up. So yes, one of the main ones I would like to is eliminate that new rental ordinance that was just put on, that three unrelated people can't live in the same unit. I've been at the homeless breakfast the other day. Eileen Donahue was there, the CTI, many interested parties, and they're saying how we need more housing, we have to find ways to do it. Well, that rental ordinance says that if there's two people unrelated, I mean, more than three unrelated, it goes against the ordinance. Well, if I go into an apartment with my buddy, and we're both professional businesspeople or whatever, and we're struggling, so we each take a bedroom, we each have a boyfriend or a girlfriend, whatever it may be, we just broke that ordinance. There's four people unrelated in that thing. That's not working in the right direction. But I do have another plan also that I'd like to really touch on. I'm working on a program with Senator Kennedy. It's called the Sprinkler Program, and it's just like the LED program where they give you money, it's not, they call it dusted, due upon sale, transfer, or refinancing. And we're doing that, and we can get all the second and third floors done in the downtown area. There's so much more. Reach out to me, talk to me, catch you later. Thank you.
You can buy an ad in the newspaper, too. Dan Rourke.
Thank you. The term affordable housing was really sort of an outdated term that was used years ago. What we want to focus on is, you know, workforce housing, you know, those that are getting out of high school and/or university that you want to keep here in the city of Lowell. You know, those that are just getting their first-time jobs, that have the ability, that do have a starter's income, that can live in Lowell, raise a family in Lowell, and stay here to move into that starter home or to, you know, buy their forever home, right? And then that's what we gotta look for when someone comes before the council with the development, with a housing project. That's where we can come in as councillors, to allow them, that group to stay, live in the city. And also, you know, break it up with the elderly, right, to where, you know, we're not going above and beyond to where they can't afford to stay in the city. So as a councillor, you want, you have to, it's a two-pronged effect where it's the workforce housing and the elderly housing, to where we can help them stay in the city and not have to move out.
Okay, Dan, wrap it up. Thank you. Mayor Samaras.
Okay, the good news that the price of homes are going up in Lowell. When you evaluate a person's wealth, most people, their wealth is in their home. But the bad news is that many people cannot afford a home. When you, a city like Lowell is becoming very successful, but if it cannot carry all of its people, in other words, if all of its people cannot be part of the program, we're failing. And what I'm concerned about is that we want to develop a workforce, but if that workforce can't live in the city, we have major issues to deal with. And I've been part of programs that we've seen with the Lowell Plan with the city in which we've given low-interest mortgages to people buying their first home. We have to make it where everybody can have a chance for a home because what we, when you want to have people invested in the city, when you want to have people caring, they all have to be part of the program, of the process. It can be done.
Thank you, sir. And Challenger, Jeff Thomas.
And I think that rent control for, especially the working-class residents of the city, they don't, they don't make great wages. The wage and minimum wage is just, you can't live on that. I think that somehow we have to come up with a way to make rental property or buying, first-time homeowners buying stuff easier for the first-time buyer and easier for the person that needs to rent. I'm a homeowner. I keep my rent pretty low, and I've had Section Eight in there, and I welcome that. Those are great programs. And I think that overall, if we come up with my ideas and some of my creative thinking, that we can get something established and done for the working-class people in the city, and I think that that's the way to go.
Thank you, Jeff. And Consular Mercier, last on this question.
Yes, thank you very much. I was at, I was at UTEC last night, and it was true. That was one of their main concerns and their main question, housing, affordable housing. Consular Noon hit the nail on the head when he said, "We're very blessed with partnerships such as the Coalition for a Better Acre." They have affordable housing units and CTI as well. We have something before the city council next Tuesday, Wynn Management, and they have mixed use and affordable housing. I think that we have to offer an opportunity for jobs, better jobs for better pays, so people can afford to live. We have the people in Boston that work, they're making the big bucks, come in here in the city, and that's where your prices are rising, so a lot has to be done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Nancy, your first question of the evening, or for this panel, and you would address that to Dave Willett, please.
Okay, thank you. So previously, there were several consulars supporting the Latino immigrants, but today they changed their rhetoric, and they are looking to deport those families who have lived in Lowell for a long time and contributed to the taxes. So the question is, what plan do you have for the Lowell immigrants? Should Lowell be a sanctuary city?
Well, through my Acre Neighborhood Group, I deal with the police and a different immigrant population quite often, and so I've talked with the police, and they never bother themselves with the, to ask the immigration status of anybody. When I talked to the captain's a few weeks ago, he said that anybody can come there with a problem, you could have a problem in the house, you could have a problem with a family, you could have anywhere, they do not bother asking your immigration status. But when they go to court, if they do happen to get arrested and go to court, it's mostly the judges that are the ones that ask that question and push that envelope further. And the acre is the melting pot, and I'm proud to be from the acre, proud to be in a city that respects all others, people in their nationalities and their struggles. And we have a police force that cares for the safety of all our residents without getting involved in their immigration status. I'm very happy to say that I come from a city of the Lowell that respects and acknowledges all of our diversity.
Thank you, thank you. Dan Rourke.
Yeah, you know, not to disagree with the question, but you know, during my time as a councillor, you know, we support immigrants, and what I've seen over the past two years, this current councillor supported immigrants as well. You know, and I work at the courthouse in Lowell District Court for the past number of years. You know, I've never seen a judge ask immigration status, and no one in the probation department ask immigration status at all. You know, every time a sanctuary city debate or a question comes up, it just divides the city. I think Lowell as a whole does a tremendous job with all immigrants. We have resources upon resources to help anybody that comes to the city. We do a great job in assisting them assimilate to the city of Lowell within the school system and with benefits. And, you know, Lowell above and beyond any other city in the Commonwealth, I believe is the top of the list with addressing immigrants.
Thank you, Mayor Samaras.
Okay, when you talk about sanctuary cities, I mean, that's really not a real term. It's been a creative term, I think. When you're talking about immigrants, it's an issue that we've been dealing with ever since this country was started. But the thing is, one thing that we have in Lowell, started by Ed Davis, was community policing. And Chief of Police Kelly Richardson is doing an excellent job in community policing. And what that is all about is ensuring each and every one of our people living Lowell that they're safe, and they're gonna be protected, and we're not gonna sow them to the wolves, so to speak. If someone commits a crime, it's a different situation. But the thing is, they're not gonna be questioned on their status at this point. The city's safe, but the city, the city police force is well-trained in bringing our community together, because diversity is our strength. We make it work.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Thomas.
Yes, and the immigration issue in this country, I would say, needs to stay on the federal level. It shouldn't be brought into our cities and towns. We don't need to, we don't need to deal with that issue. I don't believe in deporting someone for their immigration status or whatever. You know, if they happen to get into trouble or something, I believe in second chances. Everybody deserves a second chance. Some of these people have come to this country to seek better for themselves. They left a country that just was in shambles, and this city, that's what this city was built on, was immigrants. And I don't think that we should hurt any of the immigrants that have come into this city and tried to better themselves by coming here.
That's it. Thank you, Jeff. Consular Mercier.
Yes, previously on the debate, we had City Consular Rodney Elliott, and he brought up this fact, and this is true. We have a policy in place. We had a lady some years ago come forward and wanted to make Lowell a sanctuary city. Very first thing I did was ask the police chief, who happened to be Bill Taylor at the time, "Should we be a sanctuary city?" He said, "No, we have a policy in place that we do not stop people and ask them, 'Do you have a green card, are you a citizen?'" We don't do that, so to say that we should be a sanctuary city, we have things in place that would not allow people to be discriminated or hurt in that respect. I think that what we have is the right thing to do. My father was an immigrant, so I have a great love for immigrants myself. My father was one.
Thank you, Rita. Consular Noon.
Thank you. Again, you know, everyone agree that our city's strength is our diversity. We have so many flag raising, so many festivals with various culture. And again, chief after chief, or have a de facto policy, that is, we do not ask question of immigration status. You know, we, the chief of police, chief after chief, again, do, community policing is a great thing for them, that we need to strengthen that relationship between the police department and the community, to have a policy, written policies in place and saying that, you know, we will question immigration status and all that. That will undermine the community policing, and plus, we don't have resource to do that. So let the federal government do their job their way, and we, the city, need to continue on with the de facto policy that our chief advocate for and pry on.
Okay. Thank you, Vesna.
Could I add to that?
Yes, thirty seconds.
The issue is, when you would think of some of the students at Lowell High School, and many that were illegal, but the thing is, they were the top students in the school. Their biggest problem was being able to apply to a college. So sometimes what we think of, when we think of immigrant, immigrant status and what have you, we think of the worst of the worst. They're accounts for, and they're dealt with, but when you have students that have a great future and offer something to this country, what do you do?
Thank you. Anyone else on this issue? Vesna?
These days, people fear, you know, fear of reporting crime because they feel less, less safe to report crime. If they're the victim of the, of the crime and/or witness of crime, they're not gonna do it, and we want them to do that. We want them to report to our police department so that we can solve it, we can arrest those who commit those crimes. So I will really support what the chief is doing.
Thank you, Vesna. We'll move on. A question from Gloria Politis. That question should be addressed to Dan Rourke, please.
Do you support a project labor agreement for the downtown high school project?
If I was a councillor at the time when a question came up, I would support it. With the Lowell High School project, it's the biggest size and scope project in the state's history. The only way to guarantee that would have came in on budget would have been with a PLA or Project Labor Agreement. or Project Labor Agreement. You know, also, you can guarantee Lowell workers, I believe about the 50% of the labor could have been Lowell jobs. And we think about, we talk about housing, you know, how do you, you know, keep Lowell people living in the city of Lowell, not just for that high school job, but, you know, once they get into apprenticeships and working with unions, they could have jobs for the next 30 or 40 years. So, I would have supported a project labor agreement for the high school job. Thank you.
Councilor Samaras.
Okay. As mayor, I mean, I support unions, but the thing is, as mayor, I'm given a fiduciary responsibility to protect the taxpayers of the city of Lowell. According to the contractors that we have hired and the people making the assessment, that the PLA would be costly to the city. We made a deal of $343 million, and who's going to pay the bill? Is it going to be taking part of the high school down? In other words, eliminate rooms? Or is it to be assigned to the taxpayer? That's my concern in regard to meeting the needs of immigrants, women, Lowell people. The city manager has worked with the construction company, Suffolk Construction Company, to offer all of those entitlements to our people. And I did what we had to do to ensure that this high school is going to be built. That's the most important aspect.
Thank you. Jeff Thomas.
Yes, I would support a project labor agreement. Because everybody knows I'm in the labor movement, I'm in the laborers' union out of this city. And we set the rate for the wages. The issue of it going to cost 20 to 40 million dollars more is a non-issue, really. The labor unions, the prevailing wage, we set it. PLA does not mean that it's all 100% union. It can go 100% union, but it doesn't all have to be 100% union. PLA is a very open-ended agreement. You can have certain percentages as to the residents, and you can have them. It's not against the law to have that, as someone in the city may tell you. That's not, that's not what it's all about. It's about the residents and the kids in the high school. The money issue is really a non-issue, and it should never become an issue, because it's not a fact.
Okay, Jeff, thanks. I think we're going to stay on this for a minute. But Councilor Mercy here.
Yes, thank you very much. On May 14th of this very year, I did make the motion to support a PLA, and it failed. And the reason that it failed was because people thought that it would create an additional 40 million dollars, but yet, they never proved that to me. I don't know where they're getting this figure. We have a prevailing wage there. All I know about PLA is, what I tell you is what I've read and investigated. You have, on time and on budget is what it's all about. We hire, we have an agreement whereby we hire kids from the Vogues School, from the different places. We hire Lowellians, we hire women, we hire veterans. They claim that without the PLA, they're going to do that? I'm going to haul their feet to the fire and make sure they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vesna Noon.
Thank you for the questions, great questions. The cost for the high school is 343 million dollars, and we put it out to bond, you know, and so, the request for PLA came thereafter. Our job is to make sure that the project is done on time and on budget. On top of that, when the manager hired the construction, Suffolk Construction as an agent for the city, we put in the language in there. They agreed to have us put in the agreement, the local labor language, that will ensure that we will hire local minority and women, as well as apprenticeship program that is set up by the, those union and non-union people. So, to hire people from the Vogue and elsewhere to do this job. So, that's what we want to do, and that's what we'll continue to do, to build the best high school in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Vesna. And Dave.
Yes, I was union, Local 429, collecting a retirement from them right now. I believe that the prices can't be that different, because prevailing wage is set by the union wages. So, number one is, I will not hinder or slow the high school down at all, but I will ask questions. That's what you're hiring me to do as a councillor. So, I will ask questions, because I really want to understand how it can cost that much more. I've been on union jobs, I've been site foreman in the municipality of Springfield, Mass. We put in the sludge treatment plant. I was a site foreman overseeing that. Sometimes I had 60, 70 men underneath me, and women. And we brought it in on time, on budget, and that's in Biotech Magazine, and we did that back in the 90s. And so, it is very possible to do. And when you call the hall, you get a group of trained professionals. We want this job to come in on time, but we also want it to be right. And we have to do the safety of our students, and that's one of the other stuff, too, is good, again.
So, like we did in the first debate, we'll stay on this topic for a minute. So, the city manager that's been hired by this city council and is paid top money to run the city says that it would cost 40 million dollars, and she has said that in The Sun, WCAP, on an LTC. And she's also said that the MSBA, I believe, has not approved a project with a PLA in a number of years. So, I'll start with you, Jeff. You know, you're the union guy, not to pick on you, but, so where's the truth? Is someone not being truthful here?
The truth is, it may very well be unprecedented that MSBA hasn't had a PLA on a school, which I don't believe that. The city manager has given two reports by two institutions that are very inaccurate. They were two, two-page reports. The local building trades gave the city and all the councils 100 to 200-page report with fact that PLA's come on time, under budget, with highly-trained workers, highly-trained apprenticeship programs, and that's what this needs. That's what has to happen in the city. And with a PLA, that can't happen, including all the local highs for all the local residents. And it happens in other major cities in this Commonwealth, and for some reason, in this city, it's supposed to be illegal.
Okay. Rita.
The Sanguis Arena was built by a PLA. Oh, I'm sorry. The Sanguis Arena was built, yeah. So, I mean...
And anyone else? Dan?
Yeah, sure. It doesn't matter, Chris, if you've been on the project, if a union's been on the project, or if Mickey Mouse was on the project, it's prevailing wage. So, you know, it has to come in on time, on budget, and the community benefits of a PLA vastly outweigh not using one.
Councilor, Councilor Samaras, you're an opponent.
Okay. The issue was mayor, you know, working with the city manager, but also listening to Suffolk Construction, Perk and Eastman, and those companies. It's those companies that have stated clearly that there would be a cost. It varies from 15 million to, you heard, up to 40 million dollars. But the issue is, another concern is that the non-union companies that would sue, because the PLA could lock them out of applying. There's a lot of issues, and this can be detrimental to the high school. And you understand, the high school's that important to me. I'm not going to do...
20 seconds.
We were told that the MSBA did not support a PLA. I called Boston, I called Boston, and he said, "That's not true." So, you tell me who's telling the truth, but...
For Councilor Rohr.
There's never been a lawsuit filed, never.
And I, we don't have to worry about a lawsuit. I don't think the ABC is going to file a lawsuit against us because there's a PLA. PLA's go across this state constantly, and they very rarely are fought by the ABC Association.
All right, well, some very earthy opinions here, so we'll move on to the next question, and we'll see what the future has in store. The next question is from Vizal, pleased to Councilor Samaras.
Councilors, mental health is a huge concern in not just the Cambodian community, but across all communities. It is the root cause for many social ill. There is a waiting list for these kind of services that currently exist in Lowell. What will you, in your position, do to help bring more attention and resources to this issue?
The issue...
Mental health issue.
Oh, mental health issues. Mental health issues are very important. I mean, you know, the city manager's just recently worked with many of the agencies to deal with the homeless, and it's all about mental health issues and not getting the support that they need. This is something that I've been a strong advocate for, you know, while I was at the high school, and now as mayor in the city of Lowell. We're working with the city manager to ensure that we're bringing in more of the nonprofits to work on this problem in a common way. When I say in a common way, all working together, because so many agencies do a little bit of everything. And what we need is a common approach by everyone to resolve this type of issue, and we certainly can attend to this problem. We've got enough resources in this city to deal with it. It's just, you have to have the desire to want to deal with it, and that's what's important. I think we have that desire.
Thank you. Jeff Thomas?
Mental health for me is very right up my alley. I lost my brother nine years ago to suicide, so mental health means very much a lot to me. It starts with everyone in the city. Number one, veterans coming back from the wars, the police department, the fire departments, they see tragic stuff daily, and that is a real concern of mine. It also rolls into the substance abuse issue in this city. I think that we need to start reaching out pre-addiction rather than post-addiction. We need to start helping these people out beforehand and find more ways and more funding to reach out to these people and get their mental health services before they become addicted and before they start having problems. That is a very big concern of mine. I very much plan on keeping that on the table when I become a councillor.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Mercy here.
It was a very sad day in the city of Lowell many years ago, when the Department of Mental Health closed down Solomon Mental Health. Richard Howe was our mayor at the time. Richard Howe, Bud Carfield, and myself went to Boston to the Department of Mental Health, and we not only pleaded, we begged, "Please keep this place open. This is going to devastate the city." And over the years, we found that it has. There were nobody to monitor people that needed to take their medication. It's a very serious problem. That does lead to drug addiction, fall in the hands of the wrong crowd, very serious issue. I deal with this each and every day in the Sheriff's Department. People come in, they need help. But the city manager has taken it upon herself to form a task force, which this council supported, to try to coordinate housing and mental health issues together and try to monitor it by the programs that we have, so that we're not duplicating services and we're working together in unison. So, I think it's a good start.
Thank you. Councilor Noon.
Thank you. A lot of these individuals do have struggle to find a place to live. In the past, the policy with shelters or home housing is treating the mental health or addiction first. With the recent convene of the homelessness task force by the manager, supported by this council, we bring all the providers together, that they haven't talked to each other, and they work, they do this issue, they address some of this issue, homelessness, mental health, addiction, but they don't talk to each other. So, we brought them together to address, to talk, to start talking, to address this issue, say, housing first. As when you offer them a place to stay, to live, then you address the issue of mental health and addiction, and that's what the city council supports with the hiring of the housing coordinator to work with all these nonprofit organizations to address this issue and more.
Thank you. Dave Willett.
Yes, it is a very big issue, being in the inspection field, in working in the city. I ended up, I'd be in the homeless camps, I'd be in the, under the bridges, talking with people. And that is one of the biggest issues of, that they have. They don't have a place to live, they don't have a place to go, or just guidance, because they're out there and they feel alone, they have questions to ask, or nobody's really watching over. If all of a sudden, they forget to take their medication, or if there's nobody there to continue helping, and then a lot of them self-medicate, and that becomes into the drug issues. I've been in apartments where, I've been with people, and I've noticed that there was an issue where they needed help immediately. And they'd call around, and it wasn't possible just to go. Like, the hospital wouldn't take them, this one wouldn't take them. I mean, you can also get them into that ward over there, but there was no place that would just organize, that you could just bring them to. So, yes, so the collaboration of everybody together, get all the different agencies and everybody talking and working together, especially with the new homeless inspector that's in the city of Lowell.
Thank you. And Dan Rohr.
So, being a probation officer within the city of Lowell, Lowell District Court, and mental health being a huge issue, especially in the criminal justice system, we've recently established a mental health court over Lowell, and the knowledge of agencies and resources that are available, not only to the court system, but to the city of Lowell, I feel I can bring a vast knowledge to the city council going forward.
Thank you. I think we have time for at least one more round of questions. Nancy, take it away, and you can pose this to Jeff.
Thank you.
Thomas, please.
So, several streets in Lowell are in poor condition and continually contribute to destroy our cars. So, is there a program to rebuild the streets within your work plan? And if so, how long do you plan to develop it?
I plan to develop it immediately. There's a, there's a long list of streets that need work, and from what I know, you keep, there's never an accurate list, it always constantly changes. I think that you need to focus on neighborhoods. Get the neighborhood that you're going to focus on, whether it be half the year, one year, whatever it may take, but come up with an annual plan to take care of all these city streets. We definitely need a lot of work. I know there's, you know, the economic development that's coming down here into the downtown area is very, very crucial to what the city wants to do with the downtown. But they better, there's got to be a better schedule, and I plan on dealing with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilor Mercy here.
When you go door-to-door and you talk to people, they're not concerned so much of economic development, but what they're concerned about is the fact of that there are streets and sidewalks. That's number one. They want to have a good rapport with their streets. And the factory mains that we had many years ago, Dan Tenza asked that the city create this big, thick book to evaluate every single street. We kind of go by that, and we can only do so many streets and sidewalks per year. Kevin Murphy did the gateway streets and sidewalks. We have Chapter 90 funding for that, and if your street is not accepted as an accepted street, you won't get it fixed. So, but we do have a list, and we try to keep up with it.
Thank you. Vesna.
Well, the city need to continue to improve our infrastructure. This council and previous have done, have tried to do that. You know, the, speaking of the paving, street, we have a long list of streets that need to be paved and potholes, and we do a lot of managing, you know, when there's a big pothole, and then we call the DPD to fix it, you know. But there still need to be more work to be done, and that's going to cost money, you know, and that's something that we, as city council, need to look at. What is, what we need to do in terms of cutting some of those paving streets that need to be paved and pave it more, and also address the potholes, as you indicated.
Thank you, Vesna. Dave Willett.
Yes, so, that is one of the things I noticed when I went door-to-door, the different neighborhoods. People care what's right outside their house and their sidewalks and the potholes are one. I live at 113 Cabbage Street, and that's the old Mill Girl's house. And the sidewalk in there is like this, the gas things are sticking up, I get big puddles in the winter that people could slip on, and I've been trying to get that fixed for years. So, yes, I understand your pain and the torture of trying to get it done. Economic development, when there's a company going in, and I notice we're doing it now, and we just got to make sure we keep doing it, that has, they're doing a project, that they're redoing the sidewalks, putting in the curbs, everything. And the main one that I see, though, is when somebody cuts into the street and they go to their house, a lot of times, they just fill the hole, and then you go by about a year later, and all of a sudden, you got the dump now, and you got the dump now. So, they got to be more of, the contractor's got to be liable for the thing, even if it's a year and a half, two years later, whoever made that dump in the road should always be back a year, whatever it takes, that's his for life. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more on that one. Dan Rohr.
Yes, so, the main job as a councillor, right, is the quality of life issues that the residents deal with every single day, you know, they deal with their lives. And when you have a situation such as a pothole or a street sign, you know, reach out to a councillor, you know, get a couple of neighbors, send an email, make a phone call, come to a meeting. You know, when the manager is on TV or on the radio, you'd be pretty surprised how fast something like that gets fixed when you make a little bit of noise about it, you know, so, you know, a little bit of noise, how to get it done quick.
Squeaky wheel, right? Bill Samaras.
I go back to Proposition, when Proposition 2 and 1/2 came, and then the various economic downturns that we've had, I think everybody's aware, that's when maintenance was cut. So, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of roads, school department, you know, cancellation of book orders, things like that. And then when there was an upturn in the economy, there would be, some of the issues would be addressed, but with no common thought or plan. What I think this city council is trying to do now, with, especially with the school buildings now, is to develop a maintenance plan that works. And it's, and now we have to do the same thing with the streets. Maintenance should be an integral part of everybody's budget, but it shouldn't be dependent on the, we'll say, the economic downturns and harmed by those type of issues. So, it's all about planning.
Thank you, people. That's a wrap. Thank you for participating tonight. Thank you to our community partners, The Camair Post, the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association, and Lowell Telecommunications Corp. I want to again, thank you, thank the candidates. It takes a lot of dedication, a lot of hard work to get your name on the ballot, and even more dedication and hard work if you actually get elected. So, good luck to all you guys and ladies, and be sure to get out to vote on Tuesday, November 5th. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.